Good evening. We're going to start our study session for Monday, September 15th, 2025. We have three agenda items tonight, so we have a pretty packed agenda, and it looks like we have a lot of people here to speak. So our first agenda item is our Community Partners Grant Program Committee Recommendations. Our second agenda item is the Animal Code Amendments, and our third agenda item is the Muffler Regulations and Enforcement. We'll start our meeting tonight as we always do with public comments. You're welcome to come up and speak, as long as you're signed in on the list. You'll have three minutes to speak. There's a set of lights over here on the clerk's desk as you're watching. It'll be green through. When you have a warning, there will be a yellow light that comes on, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up your comments. We will start tonight with Guy Namiach, and I apologize if I mess up anybody's name here, but it looks like Mike Tully's on deck.
Thank you.
So, sorry, before I have you start, please introduce yourself, spell your last name, let us know if you live and work in Wheat Ridge, and which agenda item you're going to speak on tonight.
Guy Namiach, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, 3650 Ward Road. I will be speaking on Agenda Item One, maybe Two? Two? Mayor Protemp, Council, and city staff of all genders. I have a neighbor with a new dog that chooses to bark between sundown and sunset, but he's my neighbor. I also have another neighbor with two young children that test the decibel threshold so much that my other neighbor's dog reacts with a violent howl, but he's also my neighbor. My hens, my ladies, get so excited after they lay eggs, it's like, hey, Guy, look what we made for you, and they are so excited. There's a neighbor at the bottom of the street that warms up his motorcycle, driving hard up Ward Road in the morning, warming up his bike. My backyard neighbor also has chickens. She buys them unsexed. As little chicks, you can't tell the difference, and so then you end up with some roosters. These are all legal entities, activities, situations, all of them, until they abuse the neighborly relationship. We have a noise ordinance with quiet hours. My roosters are your dogs. Not all dogs bark constantly, and not all roosters crow loudly. There is no one-size-fits-all, but consideration and using existing regulations will work to keep the peace. I've heard rumors of banning because of gender. What a story. I can't even begin to think of the embarrassment Wheat Ridge will undergo. The Sustainability Program, woo, the Equality Program, the farming community. We invited the world of all colors and genders and cultures to join us. How will we answer them? What will a city whose mascot is a rooster? How will we explain abolishing roosters? Thanks so much.
We have Mike Tully up and Becky Blackett on deck.
My name is Mike Tully, T-U-L-L-Y, and I'm a Wheat Ridge resident. I want to address the staff memo and recommendation regarding this Agenda Item Number Two. I strongly disagree with the recommendation of allowing one rooster per residential household. That recommendation is not supported by any justifiable reasoning. For the sake of clarity, I will refer to this memo as Staff Memo One. Fortunately, we have another memo for the next Agenda Item, and that memo is very instructive to the current nuisance issue. I'll refer to that as Memo Two. This second memo addresses noise constituting the nuisance from loud muffler. It states in part that loud exhausts disrupt the peace of residential neighborhoods. Is...
Just talking to Mike.
This noise not only diminishes quality of life, but it also increases complaints to local law enforcement, signaling a clear need for a structured enforceable solution. Those same comments apply equally as well to the continual crowing of a rooster, which clocks out at at least 130 decibels. Imagine having a car with a loud muffler, driving up and down your street for four hours straight on a Saturday and nine hours straight on a Sunday. That's what we endured with our neighbor's rooster just this past weekend. Memo One briefly mentions the fact that surrounding municipalities ban roosters. Memo Two states neighboring cities have similar ordinances in place demonstrating both feasibility and regional consistency. It concludes, "These measures reflect a well-rounded strategy for improving quality of life through enforceable noise control." If we can ban noisy mufflers, we can certainly ban a nuisance animal like a rooster. Memo One speaks to noise enforcement efforts, noting that enforcement starts with trying to work with the owner and progressing to issuance of a summons to court. What the memo does not mention is that if you are dealing with an entitled, obdurate, and vindictive animal owner, as we are, that owner can continue to allow the animal to crow unabated until at least the arraignment, and very likely through a trial. We have been enduring this special kind of hell for the past two months, and the arraignment date is still not until October 2nd. As it stands, the owner is still allowing this nuisance rooster to crow all day in what can only be described as an act of vengeance. You have before you the opportunity to stop this from happening to any more of your constituents. You can and should enact a rooster ban.
Thank you. Becky Blackett up, and Jill Mustafa on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Protemp and Council members. My name is Becky Blackett, B-L-A-C-K-E-T-T, and I have lived in Wheat Ridge since 2002. You may remember me from the August 25th meeting. I am a single mother and the owner of 11 properties in District Three, including 10 long-term rentals and my personal residence. I also own a property in Denver, yet live in Wheat Ridge because this city has always valued sustainability and urban farming. I'm here tonight with my son because of an inconsistency in our ordinances. On August 27th, I received a summons to appear in court in early October. The issue is my rooster. Wheat Ridge allows roosters, yet if a neighbor complains, code enforcement is required to act, first with a warning, and then with a summons, regardless of how loud the sound actually is. There is no objective measurement of decibels, no comparison to other everyday noises such as a... only a subjective judgment of nuisance. Our ordinance on Unreasonable Noise, Section 16-103, restricts activities like trash pickup between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. I know this, having served as HOA president for over a decade and dealt with trash haulers arriving too early. A trash truck is louder than my rooster, who crows at about 72 decibels with no crow collar. The ordinance also accounts for unavoidable noises, like those from CDOT or the FAA. Animal noises should be treated in a similar way in some cases. For example, magpies measure higher in decibels than my rooster, especially before he is let out of his coop in the morning. Since I last spoke with you, I have taken additional steps to reduce noise. I've added a second layer of soundproofing to our coop and installed a white noise machine in the barnyard, reducing the stimulation our rooster gets from the surrounding sounds. And he is wearing a crow collar that lowers the volume of his crow. Still, our current code around animals, Section 4-9, defines nuisance as frequent, habitual, and unprovoked howling, barking, or other unreasonable noise. Without objective criteria for what counts as unreasonable, this language leaves all animal sounds, even natural and expected ones like a magpie's call, a barking dog, or rooster's crow, open to interpretation. The truth is, living in the city means hearing sounds from neighbors and the environment around us. From my home, I can hear other roosters, dogs barking, magpies, wood chippers, lawn mowers, rush hour traffic, and the trash truck. These are all normal sounds of community life. Wheat Ridge in particular has a proud agricultural heritage, and in honor, my son's basketball team is even called Farmers. Council, I urge you to do two things. Clarify how loud animal noise is allowed to be, so code enforcement has objective standards to apply. And second, recognize when some animal noises are unavoidable and part of both our agricultural past and sustainable future. Unlike dogs, roosters cannot be trained not to crow. Please continue to support Wheat Ridge's values of sustainability, urban farming, and agricultural connection. Stand with families like mine, and ensure that roosters and other poultry remain a permitted and protected part of life in Wheat Ridge. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jill Mustafa up, and Kimberly Cross on deck.
Jill Mustafa, M-U-S-T-O-F-F-A, and my property is on the Cooler Strand property, so it used to be Cooler Strand's farm. So I happen to have a rooster, and he crows occasionally. He will crow sometimes at 5:00 in the morning and sometimes at 3:00 in the morning. He's in his coop. He's locked up at night. Now, I have a hen that I broke her leg, and I had to separate her from my flock because of the rooster mounting. She started to crow. Hens do crow. It's not only roosters. So if we're going to stop roosters from crowing, that means we couldn't have hens either because hens crow. So that really bothers me if I would have to get rid of my chickens. And when we were going through, the bird flew. None of you could buy eggs, but I had eggs because I had a flock. And same with all of my other neighbors who had their eggs. And I agree about a noise... My daughter, the neighbor's dogs, they are louder than my rooster. The children in the apartment building are louder than my rooster. And it's like, if we're going to be going after the roosters, we're going to have to go against children, and we're going to have to go against the dogs, too, because they are louder than a rooster who crows occasionally. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Kimberly Cross is up, and Chris McEwen on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Grants Committee. My name is Kimberly Cross, C-R-O-S-S. I'm on West 41st Avenue. I'm here to introduce myself and kind of see how things go, and trying to apply to be on your grant committee. Sorry. I've been a part of the Wheat Ridge community for a very long time. I was with the Wheat Ridge Police Department Volunteer Academy for over five years. I feel it's important to be a part of one's community, and when the funds outweigh the need, then I'm willing to be a part of that team that helps to make those difficult decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris McEwen is up, and Becky Osborne on deck.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chris McEwen, M-C-C-U-N-E. I do live in Wheat Ridge, 7395 West 32nd Avenue. My family own and operate Roost Farms, and humble brag, I'm pretty sure we have the most chickens in the entire city. So, there you go. So if you're a fan of chickens and roosters, here I am. I want to say three things. My family, we moved, we say that it was not a midlife crisis, but a midlife awakening. In 2014, we moved from Denver. I changed my career to start a small farm in the Denver metro area. I did a lot of demographic research. Guess where we picked? Right here, Wheat Ridge. Why would we pick Wheat Ridge? Well, there's a city ordinance that promotes sustainability, urban farming, all these things. When I compared it to all the other places in the metro area, this was like a slam dunk choice. That was only accentuated as I sent three kids to the local high school, and they played all the sports, and one day they came home and they said, Dad, we have the lamest mascot. I'm like, what do you mean? They're just like, we're the farmers. I'm like, are you kidding me? We have like the best mascot. Farming agriculture has been a part of the fabric of this community from its inception. Chickens, roosters are part of that heritage. So I believe it's who we are. It might not be something that we're actively practicing in every home, but it's something that matters to us, it's something that we value. So there's our history. When it comes to the chickens, the second thing I want to say is, I have a lot of experience of watching hens and roosters. The natural state of these animals is to have a rooster. One rooster to 25, 50 hens is plenty. But those birds are healthier, they are happier when they have the rooster. The rooster offers protection, the rooster seems to offer just encouragement and support. And I'm not saying that everybody has to have a rooster, but if you do have a rooster, your hens are the better for it. I personally think if we're going to have these animals and we want to promote their best life, then allowing there to be roosters in our farming historical community is important. Last thing I want to say to the people that make the decisions, if it is necessary to strike some kind of balance and to figure out some way forward where we honor our past, we allow us to keep chickens, we allow roosters, consider doing things like has already been mentioned, but also, you know, having some stipulations about when roosters would need to be kept in their coops. Have some information and guidance about what kind of coops would be suitable to keep the noise down. The decibel idea, I believe, is a good idea, especially when you think about all the other things that all the other speakers have brought up, like, hey, this is louder than a rooster, that's louder than a rooster. Please allow us to care for these animals in a way that is most beneficial and natural to them, and honors who we are. Let us keep our roosters and let them thrive in this place. Thanks.
Thank you. Becky Osborne up, and Molly, I'm going to mess this up, Duplecian on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, everybody. I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I have lived in Wheat Ridge my whole life. I'm 65 years old. I grew up here, and my parents loved the rural flavor of this part of town. It was an affordable part of town, and you could still kind of give your kids that agricultural experience. I fell in love with horses, and I loved horses and grew up with horses, and I finally was able to buy a small property here in Wheat Ridge. And I have a little farm, and I can have my horses there, and I have chickens there. I currently don't have a rooster, but I do have a hen that crows. And this is the coolest place to live because you can live close to the city but still kind of be in the country. And if we start limiting roosters, well, can we limit dogs? Can we do that? If you live in this area, that's what this place has always been, and I hate to see anything changed more beyond where it is. You know, we're getting crowded in with lots of people. Let's try and keep the flavor of truly what Wheat Ridge is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Molly Duplecian up, and Jaleen Kubasta on deck.
Hello, Molly Duplecian, D-U-P-L-E-C-H-I-A-N, and I'm here to speak on the Animal Code Agenda Item Number Two. I've been a resident of the 3500 block of Moore Court for 14 years, and as of this summer, our peaceful neighborhood has suddenly been disrupted with the noises of a very loud and frequent and habitual crowing rooster. This is a direct result of the lack of clarity in Wheat Ridge code. I have read your staff recommendations and would be in very much in support of either banning roosters or a more precise option of prohibiting roosters in the residential areas while continuing to allow them on the conforming agriculturally-zoned properties of at least one acre in size, with smaller lots being treated as residential. Given our experience, the noise of this rooster is very disruptive and impacts our quality of life and the equilibrium of our neighborhood. We recently recorded from our living room on a Saturday afternoon, the rooster crowing five times in five minutes. If you average that out throughout the day, it's approximately 30 to 35 times per hour. For some, that is a noise that might not bother you, but for the good of the community, we should acknowledge that that is a sound that not all find very pleasant. As much as many of us have moved to Wheat Ridge to live in a more rural neighborhood and community, we also must acknowledge that it is becoming more densely populated, and therefore, we need to adjust our code and regulations to adapt. I don't think we need to be worried about being an embarrassment. In fact, we are well behind our surrounding jurisdictions when it comes to this matter. As Wheat Ridge City Council members, it is your responsibility to act as representatives of the public, hear from residents, advocate for our needs, and make decisions on behalf of community welfare. Your action is needed in this circumstance to defend and protect the quality of life for your constituents. In this instance, what benefits the few should not burn into the many. A sound policy would weigh the voices of the many over the interests of a few. Your responsibility as a city council member is to protect the peace and well-being of the community as a whole, even if it means limiting the preferences of a few. While a small number of residents may enjoy keeping roosters, the impact of their noise is felt by many more who value peace, rest, and quality of life in their homes. The keeping of roosters, while of limited benefit to a small number of residents, creates significant and widespread disturbance to the broader community through persistent noise impacts. As part of your responsibility to safeguard public health, safety, and welfare, you must weigh the interests of the many over the preferences of few. This doesn't have to be an all or nothing. You can strike the right balance when it comes to allowing roosters without having to ban the noise of kids. That is possible. I'll just close with saying that prohibiting roosters within residential areas while allowing them on largely larger agriculturally-zoned lots is a reasonable and necessary measure to protect the quiet enjoyment of our properties and the overall quality of life for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaleen Kubasta and Kevin Kubasta on deck.
I am a Wheat Ridge resident for the last 35 so years. Thank you for allowing me to speak again today. I spoke at the last council meeting regarding Item Number Two, the rooster. Let me just start. I'm here to respectfully urge the council to consider a ban on roosters in residential neighborhoods within the city of Wheat Ridge. I understand that city staff has recommended allowing one rooster per household in residential areas. Unfortunately, this recommendation was made without input from any of us that have been directly affected by this rooster. Residents on Moore Street and Moore Court have been dealing with an ongoing nightmare caused by just one rooster. The animal crows throughout the day, disrupting our peace and daily lives. Despite being cited for this nuisance, the owner continues to ignore both the violation and the impact on the neighborhood. This situation has made it painfully clear, we cannot depend on individual rooster owners to act responsibly or considerably. Roosters are inherently disruptive in a suburban setting. Their loud repetitive crowing doesn't belong in densely populated neighborhoods. As it stands, neighbors like myself are being forced to document, record, and log these disturbances on top of enduring them. That expectation is completely unreasonable. We should not be expected to do this. We should not have to be private investigators in our own homes just to have peace and quiet. Many other cities in Colorado, including our neighboring cities, Denver, Lakewood, Boulder, Nevada among them, have already enacted common sense bans on roosters in residential zones while still allowing hens for backyard sustainability. These cities understand that urban neighborhoods are not barnyards, and that protecting residents' quality of life must come first. Owners of roosters should not be granted special privileges that infringe on their neighbors' rights to enjoy their homes in peace. This is not just a nuisance, it's a form of neighborhood bullying, and it has no place in Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge has the opportunity to follow suit as these other cities have done. We can have urban agriculture without sacrificing neighborhood tranquility. The right to raise chickens should not come at the cost of another resident's peace of mind. I respectfully urge the council to ban roosters in residentially-zoned areas of Wheat Ridge, and to do so with the understanding that the health, well-being, and basic comfort of our community members should take precedence. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Kubasta up, and H. Sanford on deck.
Hello, I'm Kevin Kubasta, K-U-B-A-S-T-A, and I wanted to thank you, neighbors and council members and mayor, for letting me speak today. I kind of had a whole thing written up here, but some of it just reiterates a lot of points we've already made. And I even agree with, I looked 40-some years ago about where to live, and I came up with the fact that I love Wheat Ridge. Raised kids here, went through farmers, running around in my household. I guess I respect the rural situation and having animals and people being able to farm in Wheat Ridge. Now, that is why I specifically picked a place that didn't actually have farms right next door to it. I picked a place that was a residential neighborhood, although lots are less than an acre. I've lived there for 35-plus years, and it has been a beautiful, peaceful, tranquil place to live, and I love Wheat Ridge. At this point, I'd never, ever thought of moving out, but at this point, if we don't do something about this, if, I mean, I had my family members over on Sunday to watch the Bronco game on the patio. About five minutes into it, we packed it up and went downstairs, went inside, didn't get to enjoy the 70-some degree weather and sit on the patio and watch the Bronco game because a rooster. And I'm surprised that they found the rooster crowing five times or whatever in a few minutes. I've got the rooster crowing five times on my phone in like one minute. So if it could only crow every five minutes or so, that would, well, it's not possible. It doesn't do it. So with that said, I support the ban on roosters in residential neighborhoods. I'm all for allowing roosters in Wheat Ridge. That's great, and I know some of you have big enough farms to be able to do that without just flat-out irritating the neighbors. I thought about playing my phone today, one of the things on just this weekend on Sunday, and just playing and having it interrupting and just explaining that you guys should all just accept that. I know it's irritating, but I thought that would be a little disrespectful, but if anybody wants to hear it, or if anybody even wants to come over and have a drink on my patio, I won't be there, I'll be inside. But you can, you can sit there and listen to the rooster if you'd like to. It's just not that fun. And I was all for chickens and goats and bees. It was intriguing, and it wasn't a problem until a few of them grew up to be roosters. And they just, I agree, they can't be taught like a dog can be taught to actually behave, or if not, you can bring it in at least. You can at least give the people a weekend. I don't even do weekends at my house anymore. We usually go find something else to do right now for the last couple of months. It's fairly ridiculous. I appreciate it, and thank you for your time, and I again support the ban on roosters in residential areas.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight, H. Sanford.
Here to talk also about Section Two of the Roosters. I think it says sec... oh, can't hear me? Section Two of the Roosters. Watching this city evolve has been wonderful, and I still believe in the success of our community. However, some bans need to be placed. Lately, my neighborhood has been hit with a disruptive and obnoxious crowing from our neighbor's rooster. It crows continually, and I have documented and filed how often with the city. The rooster has become a nuisance. My husband has stage four cancer. We no longer can enjoy sitting outside in our backyard because of the crowing. How sad is that? It's nonstop. What happened to neighborhood etiquette? We are a city, we are no longer a farming community, and we need to update our laws accordingly. I understand some people practice animal agriculture, and we respect that, with the exception of roosters. I would hope that our city council respects the many, many residents who are reaching out to ban roosters. We can control our children, we can quiet them, we can teach them to use outdoor voices, we can take our dogs in who bark and annoy our neighbors. That's reasonable, but we can't sit 20... That's reasonable, but we can't sit 20 hours listening to a rooster when we're trying to find peace within ourselves. If I have to, I will go around our neighborhoods and petition just for the simple matter of keeping peace in our neighborhood, to keep or institute this ban on roosters. I have had words with my neighbors, and it's very disturbing to me that our property values are dropping because of the practices of one individual in our neighborhood, and I have neighbors that are considering to move because of a rooster. I do not understand this at all. So we're asking, please, council, to ban the roosters like every city in this state. All we want is peace again in our neighborhood, and is that too much to ask? I do not understand. Once again, we're no longer the farming community. And just to note, my son has a neighbor who has chickens. He is, she has these wonderful chickens, they're great. She tends to them, she puts them up so they don't disturb the neighborhood, and she has said she would never consider having a rooster, and if she got a rooster or a chick that grew to a rooster, she would get rid of it because she doesn't want to disturb the neighborhood. She lives off 4020 Nelson. Wonderful lady. And my son has said chickens aren't the problem, it's the rooster. Thank you, and I hope you have consideration.
Thank you. We have no more speakers signed up to speak tonight. We have one person online, but I believe she already spoke here in chambers, so we will go on to agenda item number one, which is our Community Partners Grant Program Committee Recommendations. Mr. Goff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. We have some committee members coming up here to speak. Alex, give us a second, we're going to pull up the, Cole's pulling the presentation up, and we'll get started. Cole, you going to introduce it? Should she turn it over to our committee? Okay.
Thank you, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with two members of the Community Partners Grant Program Committee. We have Alex Goldsmith and Jeff Richards here tonight. They're going to do the bulk of the presentation here. We think it's important that you get to hear from them because they're the folks that really do the work, and it is a lot of work to review the 40-plus applications that we had this year, listens to presentations from some of these applicants, all of them absolutely amazing, incredible organizations that are doing fantastic things to support the community and the people of Wheat Ridge across a wide variety of things. Everything from having high school kids build robots to providing the basic necessities for our community members. So it's a pleasure to be able to work on this project with these people and the rest of the committee, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Cole. Thank you, council, for giving us the time to present for the Community Partnership Grant Program. I also want to thank Cole for doing a tremendous job in facilitating the application and evaluation process. Tonight, we will be presenting our recommendations for awarded funds in the 2026 budget. My name is Alex Goldsmith, and I've had the privilege of serving on this committee for the past three years.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeff Richards, I'm from District One. This is also my second year.
In this presentation, we will provide an overview of our committee and recognize the members who volunteered their time for this important work, share some historical context about the committee's work and growth, walk you through our 2026 evaluation process and how it has evolved, present our funding recommendations and next steps, and then we will leave time at the end for our final thoughts and questions from council.
This committee really functions as a bridge between the city and its intent with its funds to the organizations that apply for the grants. So our mission is to support those nonprofit agencies and programs and to be sure that they're serving Wheat Ridge. This is also the 18th year of this program, and we hope that it does continue. We think it's a valuable service to our community, and we've, everybody this year has voiced their gratitude for being able to be a part of it. We've awarded nearly $1 million since 2020 through these grants and the requests. The program continues to grow. We get more and more applications every year. We also know that that means that we're getting more community interest every year. It also means that it's more competitive. There are more people who are wanting or needing those dollars, asking for those dollars, and so the decisions are getting more difficult. You've been introduced to Alex and myself, along with us, Lindsey Shorman from District Two is also one of the people who's been in the, on the committee for more than a year. The rest of our members, Kelly Trace from District One, we have a vacancy in District Three, Allison Vitello from District Three, Charles Hood from District Four, and Raven Newberry from District Four, they're all new. I will say that if you're considering joining this group, those members that are new did an awesome job this year. It doesn't require a lot of experience, you have to pay attention, you have to be considerate, and you have to be willing to sit through a lot of presentation and then a lot of really good debate.
Last year, we saw a notable spike in applications due to increased city staff efforts to market this grant opportunity. This, combined with other funding sources drying up, has brought a wide variety of organizations, some new and some returning, from Wheat Ridge and the surrounding area. Over my three years on this committee, I've witnessed the growth in applications and the evolution of our evaluation process. The increase in demand has required us to do more diligent assessing of applications and presentations and to ensure funds are awarded properly. As you can see, the number of applicants has not only increased, but total funding requests have ballooned. In 2023, we were able to reduce the pool of requests by about $90,000. In contrast, over the last two years, we've had to cut nearly $300,000 each year. This has forced us to carefully weigh the importance of each organization's impact while comparing similar groups against each other to determine where limited funds can do the most good. While a few applicants may have requested more than they truly need, the reality is that most are underfunded simply because the program is capped at $200,000. These are organizations providing vital services, many of whom cannot fully meet community needs without more financial support.
So for 2026, the evaluations, you can see on the screen there, June 1 is when they opened, July 28 is when they closed. It's amazing to think that, to me at least, that there were 43 organizations that were able to complete the grant application and get it turned in within just that month. If you think about that, that's pretty incredible. We did change something this year. In the past, we had had presentations from all of the organizations submitting. This year, we made a change. We split it between larger and smaller grants, those asking for under $7,500 and those asking over $7,500. So for those with the lower amounts, we did not have presentations, we reviewed their applications thoroughly and had a debate and made some decisions, and then we moved on to the larger applications where we did see full presentations for those applications. Once those were completed, then we went ahead and did our evaluations. So when we look at these evaluations, we ask ourselves, who's going to be served? This organization that's submitting, who are they trying to help? We also want to know how many people they're trying to help inside the city of Wheat Ridge, and we try to track that with each application. We ask questions about, does it actually, does it actually impact our citizens above and beyond whether an organization might be located inside Wheat Ridge or not? We ask about the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and whether those applications are going to benefit our citizens in that way. And then we ask them to give us measures for their success as well as having our own, and we gauge their applications and how vigorous and full those performance measures are going to be.
Last year, we asked council for guidance of how to best prioritize awards. You directed us to eliminate applicants who are double-dipping in the city's budget, focus on awarding more dollars to fewer organizations rather than spreading funds thinly across all. As a group, our committee prioritized organizations addressing food security, housing, and community health. For 2026, we recommend awarding $200,000 across 32 of the 43 applicants. Awards range from $1,000 up to $12,000, with the median award increasing from last year at $4,000 to this year at $5,000. We will also provide feedback to applicants, giving direction about our decisions and advising what we would like to see in future applications. One key recommendation will be directed to Wheat Ridge High School groups. We encourage them to consolidate their proposals under one umbrella application rather than the piecemeal approach we are currently doing. This will help them maximize their impact and strengthen their request. So next steps for these awards. A contracting period in December 2025 where awardees will commit to using their funds as outlined in their application. Distribution of funds will happen in early 2026. Final reports from organizations are due by January 2027, demonstrating that funds were spent as promised. And so I'd like to give some of my final thoughts, has been the best I've seen in the three years of service. Their perspectives and values reflect the character of Wheat Ridge that makes us all proud to call this city our home.
Yeah, my final thoughts are that when I was being encouraged to apply for this group, people emphasized fun, and it is fun, some of the debates are very fun, but it's also difficult. You know, Alex said that we had great applicants, Cole said we had great applicants, that's true. We agreed as a group that there wasn't one single entity that applied that didn't deserve some sort of funding, and yet with limited funds, you have to make choices. So that is the difficult part. Having said that, I think that that's one thing that makes the experience more rewarding, not just working with the people that you get to who are excellent people, but it's that you know you have vetted these institutions and you're contributing to the strength of your community. So we've mentioned the vacancy, we've had somebody talk about joining, we want to encourage you tonight to join if you are interested. Lastly, I want to say that you could see through Alex's part of the presentation that our funding has not increased over the past few years, but the requests are growing, and I think that, speaking realistically, we know that's going to continue. Things are not getting easier for people, so I'd like to encourage the city council, mayor pro tem, all of the city, the manager, to think about increasing the budget for next year. I know it's going to be hard for the city as well, but we generally aren't frivolous about giving out the money. We really did try to emphasize giving out most of the money to institutions that are trying to help people eat, find places to sleep, and have clothing. Thank you.
All right, Seth, thank you. I guess we'll go questions and comments from council. Councilor Holte.
As always, I just know that this is a tremendous amount of work, and just thank you both. I think if I weren't here, this is a committee I'd love to be on just to get to understand better what the organizations serving our community are doing. And I just, first of all, I just want to thank you for taking the feedback that was provided last year. I think, you know, more and more, we're trying to figure out how to like align strategic priorities with how we're partnering in the community, so the recommendations coming forward tonight are just a really strong reflection of the dialogue between council and the committee, and just really appreciate seeing that. I have two questions. One is, what's expected in the final report? Is it like kind of a one-pager, which is like, here are the activities we did? Like what kind of reporting? And maybe that's a question for you, Patrick, if you know.
I can answer that question.
Okay, or Cole, sorry.
So we tell them that they're not allowed to submit more than two pages because we, these organizations are really proud about the work that they do with the city's funding, so if we let them go longer than two pages, they would be really long. So we limit them and we tell them that they're not allowed to submit more than two pages in that final report. It's generally very basic things. We ask them to report back to us on what are the things they did with the funds. We check to make sure that what they reported, that they did matched up with what they told us that they would do in the application. We also just ask them if there were any challenges that they were experiencing. That way, we can be aware of them and we can be nimble in the program, and we can take those things into account during the application process if necessary. We also ask them to report on those performance measures that we mentioned earlier. So we grade them based on the performance measures, and then we like to see what the results were. And then finally, we just ask them if they had anything else to add, any requests for the program, anything else that they wanted to share with us. And overall, it's a pretty small amount of work for them to do, but gives us that sureness that they're using taxpayer funding responsibly and allows us to get the information to make the program better serve them.
Thanks for that response. I do, I appreciate you just mentioning that we're being mindful of the reporting burden because these are, you know, all set like relatively small grants, and some of these are volunteer organizations. So I think one of the things, you know, to Jeff's request around considering additional funding, it would be, to me, exciting to see when this comes back to us, or even in February after the reports have been submitted, that there's some dashboarding or impact data that comes back to us, especially for organizations that are applying year over year. But I mean, if we can like and say $200,000, like, you know, turned into this many meals or this many kids served with extracurricular activities, I think just some of those impact statements, even if it's just like collecting a one paragraph impact statement that they provide in the final report, but I think getting an aggregate understanding of how these funds are like having impact. I mean, we see it at the application, but then it's not as visible when it comes back to us. So just for consideration when we do reporting on these, some sort of way that we can, like, when this comes back to us in a year, see like the $200,000 last year looked like this in our community. I think it also really supports like consideration that there's need for more funding because nonprofits are being tremendously impacted right now. Philanthropy is a tough space. So, and actually, I think my other question was sort of addressed, but looking at the new application window that's been shifted to the summer, I just wonder if it disadvantages schools whose like parent organizations may not be paying attention in June to that kind of thing, but if there's a desire to actually encourage schools to apply more like comprehensively, maybe that addresses it. But I know when I was on the Parent Teacher Association in June, we were not paying attention to things, so maybe just a consideration there that the alignment of that application window may not align with like when some of our community organizations are like paying attention. So other than that, just really fantastic, strongly support the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I certainly do appreciate the effort and apparently the fun that the committee had in reviewing the materials this year. It is something that is very important to, these are all very, very important organizations to the city of Wheat Ridge. But I was quite surprised and frankly very disappointed that the But I was quite surprised and frankly, very disappointed that the nonprofit that I have worked with for a long time, I've seen their financial reports, they are a solid organization. They do, the work they do is about as important, a public service by a nonprofit, to provide a service, provide funding to vulnerable residents, they're experiencing energy-related hardships. The nonprofit is called Energy Outreach Colorado. It was the single one that I recommended that they apply for this year, and the report shows that they were turned down. And I'm frankly, very disappointed in the fact that this nonprofit that provides a tangible service that benefits a vulnerable part of our community is not going to get a grant from the city of Wheat Ridge. So the organizations that applied and have won grants from Wheat Ridge, I'm sure I'm not going to criticize any of them, but I really believe that Energy Outreach Colorado is about as important, a community service that a nonprofit can provide.
Councilmember Dan Larson, we do absolutely agree that their organization, that organization is a invaluable resource to the state of Colorado, and we truly wish that we have the funds to be able to spread out as much funding as possible to the organizations that are not only incredibly valuable, but important to the residents, not only here in Wheat Ridge, but to the state as a whole. During our deliberation, we wanted to be able to give as much money as possible to all these great applicants. The organizations that did apply, that we did choose to fund, was not necessarily pertinent to their ability to be able to serve the constituents of Wheat Ridge as a whole, but to focus on food, housing, and community health. If we had more funding, we would love to be able to support all of these organizations.
Yeah, I also think that part of that debate was the number of people that would be served in the community. And from the application, it was on the lower side, I believe. So that was another factor when we looked at that. But like Alex said, that was a very difficult decision. That was one of the very difficult decisions.
Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you both and thank you to the whole committee. I know that this is really important work and I imagine it is really difficult to make these decisions and that has to weigh on you, so I appreciate all that you're doing. Couple of questions. Do you recall how many new applicants we had last year as opposed to this year? This year, there are 10.
I think it was about the same number of new applicants because we went up from 28 to 43. So, I mean, it must have been at least 10 new applicants last year.
Okay. And then, just kind of thinking about the new applicants this year, eight of the new applicants, of the 10 new applicants, were awarded nothing. And I know that was, those are all difficult decisions. In your conversations with these organizations, when you're telling them, you know, the results, I'm sure that there's a encourage you to apply again next year, how do those conversations go? And do you happen to know if the new organizations from last year applied again?
Yeah, I can address that because I'm the one who has those conversations with the folks. So what we generally do is we send out an email and we invite the organizations to schedule a time to have a conversation with us. Frankly, some of these organizations, the amount of funding they apply for, I mean, they have, some of them have full-time grant writers, so this is just a drop in the bucket for them. So some organizations are like, oh, I didn't get that $5,000 grant, that's okay. Other ones, it's more important to them. It can be a more significant part of their funding and those are the organizations that are more apt to take advantage of the opportunity to have a conversation. What I do during those conversations is I explain to them firstly, how difficult of a decision it is for the committee to make all these. And then I share the feedback that the committee had about that organization with them specifically. So when we're having our deliberation meetings, I'm taking notes down on the side about what the committee is saying about every organization, and I share that with them so that they can do a better presentation. We did have some new applicants from last year who were successful, who reapplied, having trouble remembering a couple of examples off the top of my head because there's so many. But yeah, that does happen. And I think we even had, we even had one organization, Tin Shed Food Pantry, who was a new applicant last year, they got a small amount, I think they only got a couple thousand dollars last year. This year, they took some of the feedback that I gave them from last year, they were able to incorporate that into their presentation, and this year, they're going to get a larger award. So there is some evidence that them taking the initiative to take advantage of those conversations pays dividends for them. So when they listen to the committee and structure their application accordingly, it is more successful.
That's great. I appreciate that and thanks for that. That's a lot of detail and I know that those are hard conversations, but that's really good information, I think, for all of us to know too. So thank you for that detail. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you to all of the committee members that serve in this capacity. It's really great that we can support our local organizations that are doing good work in our community and really appreciate the long-tenured veteran service so that you can help the new folks kind of get acclimated. I actually do have several questions because a lot of our conversations last year did revolve around the double dipping. So the organizations that are aligned out of our budget or receive other funding from the city, such as Jefferson Center for Mental Health and Family Tree. And I appreciate that you touched on the consolidating, the ask for organizations such as Wheat Ridge High School. So my first question is, how is that received as far as encouraging a consolidated applicant? Because as we can see, there's several that applied still this year.
Yeah, we're currently working on that with them, so there'll be more to come. The committee actually finalized their recommendations last week, so we haven't had a ton of time to put them into practice yet.
And so can you maybe talk about the process and the criteria that you look at as far as awarding various organizations within a larger organization such as Wheat Ridge High School? You know, the cheerleading booster requested 4,500 and didn't get any. However, the choir requested 9,000 and got 9,000. And then the instrumental music boosters, also the PTSA, the STEM program. So maybe just kind of touch on the decision-making around that?
I think that, you know, the high school has come up a couple of times. And first, we all definitely wanted to support the high school and education. I think that what we need more of from the high school itself is a little bit better organization on their side, number one, because it's hard to always discern. So let's take the 5,000, Farmers 5,000, which is a tradition here in Wheat Ridge fundraising for the school. You can, as a person who runs, ask to apply those funds to a specific program, doesn't mean that you necessarily will, right? Well, how do we as a committee know where those funds are going and where they will go in the future? We don't know. We also know that there are requirements through the school if they come through Farmers 5,000. There's a certain organization, so for instance, you mentioned the ban. There are certain funds and certain discounts they can take advantage of, but they can't take advantage of those if they go through the other route of funding through Farmers 5,000 necessarily. So they have a more complex kind of a topography of, you know, how do we make decisions about money and how do we, where do we get that money from? So I think in general, it would be very helpful if the high school were to help us understand how those, what the limitations to that disbursement is. Because we still are, even though it was better this year, it was more organized, we're still flying somewhat blind. And I would say that that's true for most, so you also mentioned Family Tree, et cetera. Can the city provide us with information about how they intend to fund or how they organize their funding of those groups? Because it would help us understand. And maybe we would be able to find more room for organizations like the one, I'm sorry, the Energy Outreach, right? So it's getting better. The process is good, but I think in general, we need more information. Alex?
This was a really hard decision because our youth is such an important part of our population here in Wheat Ridge. Myself, with my daughter, I would love her to be able to go to Wheat Ridge High School and I want to make sure these organizations are still strong enough for her to be able to participate in them. It really comes down to the meat of their applications and how we're able to divvy up the money as a whole of $200,000. When it comes to certain organizations asking for money for uniforms versus organizations asking for money for fundraising their instruments and their piano, it is hard for us to be able to give only a little bit of money towards uniforms and a little bit of money towards instruments as well. Will only half the team have those funded uniforms versus us being able to upgrade instruments that will last years, if not decades? Unfortunately, if we had more money, we would all obviously fund as many high school organizations as we could, but for us in our limited capacity, we're unable to make those delineations between how to equitably fund organizations so that everyone has a fair share of the funds and awards that we're giving out.
Thank you, and thank you for that valuable feedback as far as needing more information because I think that the onus is on us, on our end, as far as providing that information so that you can better discern on the amount to give to various organizations that we otherwise may support in the budget. One other question, specific to an organization, given the tragedy that happened last week, I was surprised to see that the Jeffco De Angelis Center wasn't funded in any capacity. So if any, if people don't know what that is, that was the former Martinson Elementary School that was closed and now it's not just a Jeffco, but also State of Colorado and actually houses many police organizations outside of the state of Colorado to provide training to first responders in regards to school shootings. And it's been an invaluable asset in our community. And so I was just surprised to see none budgeted for that, if you could maybe speak to it.
Yeah, the debate on that was, well, first of all, in terms of the application, the application did not talk about supporting, let's say, fire and police here. It was specific to providing women's self-defense classes here in Wheat Ridge, which we completely think are awesome. But we had to ask ourselves, you know, how many people inside the city of Wheat Ridge will, women, will take advantage of those classes, those self-defense classes? Again, awesome idea, but our opinion based on their kind of breakdown was that they wouldn't be serving that many people. So that's my recollection of why we made that decision.
It's a hard decision because their property is in Wheat Ridge as well, and we want to make sure we're supporting as many Wheat Ridge organizations as we can. These dollars that we are distributing will go back to the city in some form or fashion. And when we're making these evaluations, it's really hard to cut certain organizations over others. We really wish, again, that we could fund everyone, but at the end of the day, we felt like it was more important to be able to fund those services that needed the funds more than certain other organizations as well, which could be able to find funds in other avenues.
Thank you, and I just recalled one more question in regards to the Colorado Youth for a Change and the Friends of Stevens. So the Colorado Youth for Change funds a tutor to help with children that are not at grade level for reading. Is that open to schools other than Stevens or is that just to Stevens students? Do you recall?
I believe that is just for Stevens students due to the closing of the other elementary schools. They have mentioned previously that they would love to expand their services and with continued funding, they might be able to expand their services to our other elementary schools as well. It would be a great service to be able to continue seeing them utilize the service here at Stevens to be able to help continue funding them and growing their foundation in order to be able to serve more people in our community. I wish that they were in both elementary schools, but I think that limitations of funding, since a lot of other funding sources have dried up, has eliminated their ability to be able to be stretched thinly.
Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question's been answered. I just want to say thank you to the committee. I know it's a lot of hard work. There's a lot of diversity in the choices that you made. You got to make some hard choices with our limited funds and, you know, I hope everybody, you know, understands the commitment that that takes. And I'm sure it's really, you know, sometimes it's probably heartbreaking when you're taking a look at some of those, you know, entities that they need the money and everybody's, you know, going through tough times and things are changing pretty quick. And so I understand your request. Thank you.
Councilor Weber.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also want to thank the committee. I can't imagine, I just even appreciate all of the thoughtful responses you've given tonight on the decisions, the very tough decisions that you have to make. So thank you for the time and all of the committee and just for the thoughtful explanations. I can't imagine how difficult it is to spread that money. So I hope as a council, we can, we can try and increase it at least a bit for the coming years, to your point. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask, probably Mr. Goff, as you're looking at the 2026 budget, do we have some extra shekels to pass around?
For the 26, we have the budget balanced right now. We, as you know, we're presenting, we're going to be bringing that back to council. Trying to get a proposed budget to you next week, I believe, right, Marion? And then we have a study session coming up. So right now, the budget's balanced. You could, we could talk about that at the study session when we look at the budget. We could move money around at that point if you'd like, but right now, we have the $200,000 budget.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more comments, I'd like to ask for a consensus that we take the recommendation from the committee that we disperse the $200,000 the way they are recommending. I see a consensus. Thank you again to the committee for all their hard work and Cole and everybody else. We appreciate it. We are going to move on. Do we need to take a break or is everybody okay to move on? No? Go ahead. Go ahead. We're going to go through each of these individually, let Cole present, and then we'll take a consensus on them as we go. Okay? Let's move on to agenda item number two, which is our animal code amendments, and we'll kick it off to City Manager Goff.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Pulling up our great staff here. Where'd Mr. Dog go? Did he hide? He snuck out. We have our attorney here as well, if we need him to help with any of our code. But if you remember, we brought this item, animal code, to you a few weeks ago. I'm sorry, you need something? Yeah, he's here. No, he's here somewhere. He may stepped out for a second, but he'll be right back. Sure, that'd be great. So we brought this item forward to city council several weeks ago, and there was a direction at that time not to proceed with the final draft ordinance, but to do some more research on various items and bring it back for more discussion. And that's why we are here this evening. I believe we have nine specific items we'd like to go through, and I think we're going to go through them one at a time and ask for consensus one at a time. That might be much easier. Again, some of these we talked about at great length a few weeks ago, so they shouldn't be a surprise. But I will turn it over to Cole now to start the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Let's get started, time out some more animal code amendments. So to begin with, our agenda for this presentation, we're going to give you a quick background, and then we're going to cover each of the following issues. First, reptiles, amphibians, and insects, then endangered species, definition consolidations, rehabilitated fighting dogs, animal sales in public, childproof structures for dangerous dogs. dogs, transfer of dangerous dogs, possession of dangerous and aggressive dogs, swine in the city of Wheat Ridge, and roosters in the city of Wheat Ridge. So as Mr. Goff said, council had previously requested a review of the animal code on June 2nd. City Council reviewed nearly 20 issues related to Chapter 4 animal code. Council provided guidance on several of those items, but requesting some additional detail on a few others. So tonight, we're going to address those items that council requested additional detail on, along with a few additional items that were identified in that interim period since June, and then we're going to take tonight's direction from council, and we're going to add it to the previous direction, and we hope to incorporate it into a single comprehensive update of Chapter 4. So first, let's begin with reptiles, amphibians, and insects. Because of the way that the city's municipal code is written, reptiles, amphibians, and insects are prohibited in the city of Wheat Ridge. However, staff doesn't have any concerns about their presence as pets in the city. So last time, we talked about this with council, we came forward with some standard regulations that we found from other cities that were about allowing these animals with some restrictions. The feedback that we got from council at that study session was that the language from other municipalities was a little too broad for the city of Wheat Ridge. So the strategy that we took with this update was to implement a risk-based regulatory approach. So for example, here's the update that we propose, that reptiles, amphibians, and insects be allowed except for the following: venomous or toxic species that can cause serious injury to humans or animals. And you'll notice that that's different from last time where we didn't include the part about serious injury to humans or animals. So our hope is that that's a little bit more specific rather than any species that has any venom or toxin whatsoever, because some of those can be relatively benign or harmless to most humans or animals. We also include an exception for venomous snakes. Those are banned in the state of Colorado, so they wouldn't be allowed anyway. Constricture snakes that are danger to humans and animals, such as certain pythons and anacondas. Again, trying to use a more focused language there so that we're only targeting the constrictures that are really a danger to the health and safety of Wheat Ridge residents. Any reptiles, amphibians, and insects classified as dangerous or hazardous by the state or federal government. In your memo, this one may have been a little confusing for you, and the memo we wrote, any animals classified as dangerous or hazardous by the state or federal government, but I wanted to make sure it was clear that we're only talking about any reptiles, amphibians, and insects classified as dangerous or hazardous. So this one banned pit bulls or any other species of dog, for example. It just applies to these three categories, and some of the animals that might be in those categories are things like rattlesnakes, alligators, crocodiles, killer bees, I think anything with the name killer in it is probably a non-starter. Okay. All right. Excuse me. So crocodilians also, including but not limited to alligators, caimans, and crocodiles. So that is the language that we propose for the council, and that is the staff recommendation.
Counselor Weaver.
I just have a quick clarification. First of all, you may want to check the actual wording on something like killer bees because killer bees are called killer bees because of how they attack, not that they, in the way they swarm, so I don't know if that's a technical term, just to check it out, because killer bees have evolved into the beehive populations in Colorado, just so you're aware of that. And there's no way to really test for it if they are in your hives, other than it will be a more aggressive hive. Pot-bellied pigs. I know it says except excluding pot-bellied pigs. Where do pot-bellied pigs fall again? I know we've had this conversation. I know we have pot-bellied pigs in Wheat Ridge, but where do they live since they're excluded in this part?
Yeah, so they live in the same part of the code as this. We're actually going to talk about those a little bit later when we talk about swine. Yeah.
Okay, so we are going to talk about swine.
Yes.
Great, thanks. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Can I ask for a consensus that we accept staff's recommendation on item number one? We have that. Okay, moving on to item number two.
All right, the next item is endangered species. There are several endangered and threatened species that are prohibited in the municipal code currently because of the way it's written. We don't currently experience a lot of issues with this prohibition. We don't really see community members coming to us asking for certain endangered species to be allowed or not, but at the last council meeting, we did hear a request that the city make an amendment to the code to allow certain endangered species to be kept in the city. And we think we found a way to do that in a manner that also balances that with the health and safety of Wheat Ridge residents, and that's by making sure that they're allowed but that they're kept by a licensed entity like a research institution or an animal rehabilitator, the people that are really best equipped to handle those types of animals. So our recommendation is to go ahead and allow endangered or threatened species listed under federal, state, or international law and kept by a licensed entity to be kept in the city of Wheat Ridge.
Okay. Counselor Dozeman.
So where would the kangaroos fall underneath this?
That's a fantastic question. Yeah. So the kangaroos would have to go through the chief's exemption process, and if you'll remember, last time, we actually talked about that exemption process, and we got guidance from council so that we could update the code to make sure that we had a little bit more leeway and discretion for the chief to review those requests for certain animals like the kangaroos, and then put reasonable restrictions and requirements on them so that they could be allowed, but they're balanced with the health and safety of Wheat Ridge residents.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and the description here says that otherwise prohibited species to be kept in the city provided they are maintained by a licensed entity. Describe the license, who issues it, and some of the other sort of procedural things that go around getting a license to maintain an endangered species.
Yeah, the licensed entities, they get their licenses from the state. They have their own review and application process that staff isn't super familiar with, but if you'd like more details on that, we can provide an update to you in an email after the meeting.
The license isn't something Wheat Ridge would issue?
Correct.
Just verify. Great, thank you.
Counselor Weaver. Anybody else? All right, I'll ask. Go ahead.
I haven't researched that yet.
Have you seen the kangaroos? Have you petted kangaroos?
Have I been what? Yes, I have been.
Did you pet them?
And we're making sure that everything is monitored and run correctly and cooperatively. If there's a bite incident, that needs to be reported right away. Oh, are the kangaroos? I'm not a kangaroo expert, but I believe they're being maintained and cared for properly to this point. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else, I'd like to ask for a consensus that we move forward with staff's recommendation on item number two. We have a consensus. All right, moving on to item number three.
The next item pertains to the definitions of dangerous dogs, aggressive dogs, and vicious animals. We have these three different definitions within the municipal code. They're currently overlapping in some areas, so some of the things that are in the definition for dangerous dogs are also in the definition for vicious animals, for example. But one thing that we heard from city council at our last meeting in regards to this is that we felt like animal behavior should be treated the same regardless of species when it pertains to the level of hostility or danger that they pose to the community. And so we've come before you to ask for a consolidation of these definitions to help us simplify the code and make it clear for people who are reading it and easier to understand. So we propose consolidating these definitions in the following way. We would have a definition for aggressive animals. That would be for less aggressive dogs and animals than the dangerous animals definition. So it is the definition for aggressive dogs, but really just expanded to include all animals. So it includes animals that are threatening, aggressive, or those that cause minor injuries. The definition for dangerous dogs and vicious animals would be combined into the definition of dangerous animals, which is defined as those that cause serious injury, are trained for fighting, and that aspect we'll talk about a little bit later, or legally declared dangerous with an uncompliant owner. So that is the staff recommendation to consolidate those definitions.
Okay. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I was just, and maybe we're going to talk about this, but I, further down in our agenda, I was reading, there is a statement that basically said, it says, "Any animals that have been classified as a dangerous or hazardous species under state or federal law." And I'm concerned about that because several of these things, I'm concerned about some sort of breed restriction, and I'm certainly not in favor of that.
Yeah, that was in regards to amphibians, reptiles, and insects. So that language was used previously as one of the things that isn't allowed for reptiles, amphibians, or insects that wouldn't pertain to animals at large.
Okay, so nothing specific about dogs?
Correct, and we'll talk about dogs and rehabilitated fighting dogs in a little bit.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So who determines or what determines an aggressive animal? Is it just a report to CSO, or how is that, how is an animal deemed aggressive if it's not, doesn't rise to the extent of a dangerous animal where usually there's some sort of penalty or court order?
Yeah, so aggressive would be those that are threatening, aggressive animals and their behavior, so like, you know, snapping at people like they're going to bite them and things like that, or those that cause a minor injury to a person or animal. That's the definition. If you would like a little bit of a firsthand explanation of how we get those cases and determine that an aggressive dog is indeed aggressive, we can give that to you as well.
Yeah, so that's more of what I'm wondering, of like how you define an aggressive animal as far as, like, if you get called, does there have to be some sort of evidence or something that deems that?
So I'll let our supervisors explain how they do it now, currently, when they come across an animal that might be aggressive or dangerous and what their traits are. I think what they'll tell you is they're not animal behaviorists, but they use pretty much common sense to determine that. Phil, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for information that's valid and verified from the reporting party, the victim. What was the demeanor of the dog in question? If they feared for their safety, that's paramount. That's an aggressive dog. Okay? If there was injuries involved in that, and there were serious injuries, then that's a dangerous dog. So we take all the facts in, we try and verify and validate what those facts are, where they're coming from, where they pertinent, where they, in lieu of the incident happening, has it happened, or did they be a secondhand or thirdhand? You know, we take that all into account when we go searching for witnesses to the event, not only the victim and/or the dog owner, but let's get some third party to witness the case and put together what they saw and draw an articulate conclusion to what happened. So again, aggressive, it's a little bit broad, but those are the definition, the defining words that we're looking for to actually label something as aggressive.
I would just say that those, you know, our assessment of a dog is not the final assessment. Obviously, it comes before, you know, the judicial body to assess it at that time. They can provide a defense that might suggest that the dog was not aggressive, and that's certainly, but we're just looking for probable cause that this probably had more, you know, that this was likely to have occurred on the street, and then take that dog and put them into a system that'll be reviewed down the line. So we're not the final judge, but we, I think the folks do the best they can to determine if this dog exhibited aggressive behavior or clearly was aggressive, and then put it into the system.
And so aggressive is kind of just like the baseline, and so then dangerous is even further above that, and obviously consequences, or I assume consequences are varying depending on whether it's an aggressive animal and minor injuries versus a dangerous animal that you take.
When we, I think when we write them in, correct me if I'm wrong, they're under the same penalty structure. It would be up to the judge to determine that if, you know, clearly if a dangerous dog bit somebody versus a dog that charged somebody but didn't actually make contact, there would be two different outcomes we would probably see in the court system, but it's definitely, you know, it's definitely trying to read the dog's behavior and understand the situation. A dog that's in its yard that charges somebody who's walking by is much different than a dog that is out running at large and then, you know, makes contact or, you know, is growling at somebody and baring its teeth. So it's all the things that I think we know from common sense that would scare, you know, the average person for a dog contact.
You have to understand that encounters with dogs can be a very emotional situation, and a lot of times, sort of change once that emotion settles and calms down. So again, we're trying to get the true happenings of whatever happened there documented. Was it aggressive? What is it not? Was it a misunderstanding? But it's a very emotional event, and you can't tell people that sometimes they're, you know, they thought they saw what they reported, and then when things calm down, okay, maybe it was an aggressive attack, maybe the dog was just trying to say hi. So you never know.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
And could, Chief, could you just remind us what happens if an attack happens on your property in a fenced area? If your dog's in your property and someone comes into the property and gets bitten or something by a dog? I'm curious, what happens?
Well, any time there's a bite, there's obviously a concern about the health of the dog and the vaccination, so we would mandatorily quarantine that. Phil, you want to comment on how we handle that as far as?
Yeah, 10-day bite quarantine is mandatory by state health standards. I have to make sure that the dog is properly vaccinated and licensed with the county, which is required.
Okay.
As far as somebody coming onto the property, it changes the dynamics a bit. Was the property posted with a dog?
Right.
Sign?
Right.
Giving reference to that sort of thing. But there's rights on both sides. You can have a dog, and if he stays on the property, you're fine, but if there's a conflict, especially with mailman coming to do his service, deliver the mail, and gets chomped, it's not going to be so well for the dog owner and the dog.
Right.
So we have to react to that kind of situation.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to add to that, that there is a provision in the code, so if you're provoking the animal into its behavior, then we wouldn't consider that to be aggressive or dangerous. And the guidance we got from council last time was to expand that, so if you are provoking any other type of animal into that type of behavior... So if you are provoking any other type of animal into that type of behavior, it wouldn't be considered aggressive or dangerous.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and I guess to follow up on that, we are looking to amend the code to expand the code to not just describe dangerous dogs, but to describe dangerous animals. And I am a bit curious to know what other sort of animals would be aggressive to me as I walk down the sidewalk.
Yeah, happy to answer that. I would just like to clarify that, so dangerous dogs is a definition in the code right now. Other animals would fall under the definition of vicious animals. So what we're hoping to do here tonight is just consolidate those so that they read a little bit easier and simpler. But it's not actually a substantial change because the same definition applies to other animals. They're just called vicious animals in the code.
Right, because if, if an animal that's endangered is not legally kept in the city. So if you are keeping a wolf in your backyard and that acts in a dangerous manner, then you've not only violated the law about keeping a, an animal that's prohibited, but your prohibited animal, animal has also become a dangerous animal.
I understand the question. I think, Phil, the question is, have we come across other animals that would be potentially vicious that are legal under the law, but somebody could encounter them and suffer, you know, from an aggressive bite or some other activity?
Yeah.
I mean, I never would have thought we'd have kangaroos in the city, but we do now. So times change, and motives of people having the animals change, and wildlife coming into, you know, civilized towns and that sort of thing because they're driven out of their natural habitats. I mean, we're going to see that, whether that's climate change or whatever. We just have to be able to react to those situations, and everybody needs to be educated on animals and making sure that they're protecting their properties and everything on their properties.
Yeah, I don't think there's really good examples, maybe cats, maybe a few other animals that people would have that you, you know, sometimes animals are very unpredictable, even when they're well behaved. So people can have a pet snake, and maybe it bites somebody because it, you know, sensed something or whatever. But it's in there, I think, as a catchall, really, is just to make sure that if some, we don't limit ourselves if there is another animal that somebody's kept legally that reacts to somebody in a negative way.
Seeing nobody else, I'm going to ask for a consensus that would move forward with staff's recommendation on item number three. Seeing that, we will move forward to item number four.
Excellent. The next item pertains to rehabilitated fighting dogs. So we're bringing this item forward in response to a council request from that June study session, which was to create an exemption for rehabilitated fighting dogs slash animals trained for dog slash animal fighting. And when we were thinking about this, we were trying to think of a way that we could implement this. And the only way that we felt safe and comfortable about allowing this sort of thing would be if we verified it with the city's community service officers. But then we did a little bit more research. We had some conversations with Foothills Animal Shelter about the situation and the idea of having a process where a rehabilitated fighting dog could be allowed if it was reviewed by the city's community service officers. And we got some additional information, and I'll go into that in a moment. But firstly, I wanted to turn it over to our interim deputy city manager, Mary Ann Schilling, so she could explain the relationship between the city and Foothills Animal Shelter and why we believe that their expertise and their recommendations are so important.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, so I, as you may recall, I'm the president of the board of the Foothills Animal Shelter. So we talked to the executive director about this because really, I think that this is one of those things that in practice, it sounds like a great idea, but then when putting it in motion, it gets a little bit more tricky. However, one of the things that the executive director really pointed out was that, you know, with fighting dogs, typically the owner is the one that's charged, and the dog is automatically labeled as dangerous. So I think that's something to take into consideration, that their behavior is often a consequence of the environmental conditions. And so what typically happens is that these dogs are then placed with the animal shelter. So they're not typically with our CSOs at this time, who then determine their suitability for rehoming and provide the necessary behavior modification resources that the city doesn't have. So they're really the experts on there. And so while we have our CSOs who can do a great assessment of providing the animal control services, we really feel like the animal shelter is the one that's best equipped to manage something like this, and that's not something that shouldn't necessarily be managed by the city in this process, and that these dogs aren't necessarily labeled as dangerous until there's a behavior that indicates that that, it needs to move forward in that way. So what we'd like to do is continue to have the animal shelter to be the organization that manages rehabilitating animal fighting dogs and what that looks like. And I'll turn it over to Phil as well to share what experience we have. One of the things that we talked about with the CSOs is that we're actually not seeing any rehabilitated animal or dogs in the city related to fighting. It's not something that is currently an issue. Obviously, these things could always become an issue, but we hesitate to sort of make the recommendation to move forward with something like this when it's not currently an issue, and we do have a nonprofit professional organization that can manage something like this. So is, Phil, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I mean, we're going to, we're going to judge the animal based on its behavior and demeanor that we know, that we can identify. But that doesn't mean we're going to, we're going to know this dog was, has a history. So we got to be very careful when dealing with any dogs that we do. And it's a situation that we want our officers to be careful and not get hurt in any situation that they're dealing with an animal.
Thank you. So just to recap, our concerns were, our community service officers are not trained to assess the long-term risk of aggression from rehabilitated fighting animals, and that was one of the concerns that we had. It's, it was also difficult from our conversations with Foothills Animal Shelter. We learned it's difficult to eliminate aggressive behavior from some of these animals, and that's not how success is generally defined. It's generally defined by ongoing, ongoing behavior management. And we're also concerned about the liability of designating a formerly fighting animal as rehabilitated. So because of all those things and everything we've said here and that you've heard, our recommendation is to not create an exemption for rehabilitating fighting animals from the definition of a dangerous dog or animal.
Councilor Weaver.
My only concern with that is because it gets kind of close to the breed bans that we've seen in the area. And, and so, so I rescue bull terriers, and I have rescued bull terriers forever, and they weren't necessarily fighting dogs. But that is a breed that has been considered, and I'm, and I'm simply worried that the word rehabilitation will be confused with rescue. Because I work with very professional rescues that do not put a previous fighting dog back into a rescue population. Unfortunately, they typically have to be destroyed because they can't be rehabilitated for lots of the reasons that we talked about. And so I just, I know that, that we deal with a lot of folks in Wheat Ridge who have rescued dogs. And, and I, and I'm just wondering if, I don't know if this makes sense, but the opposite might be used to make the argument of, am I making sense? So, so do not create an exemption for rehabilitated fighting animals could also be read as you may not rescue a dangerous breed, what has been considered a dangerous breed. So I have had lovely bull terriers, and many of you have known my, my bull terriers, but it is considered a dangerous breed in some places, in some cities, like pitfalls. And I'm, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there to those of you who, who deal with rescues as well. Is there any concern about that language in a rescue situation? Because, because I deal with reputable rescues who do not put former fighting dogs back in, into a population and try and say that they're rehabilitated. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
I'm not promoting saying fighting dogs have been rehabilitated.
Yeah, I think that's the difference here, though, right? Fighting versus rescued.
Yeah, so if you take the recommendation and council does nothing, then those animals that you're talking about, dogs that are sometimes considered dangerous because of their breed, they would still be allowed in Wheat Ridge.
Okay, so that's not an issue.
Councilor Snell.
So to add to this, I do know that in, there are some cases with fighting dogs that are going through, there's this very specific type of rescue that, you know, can, can try and help these dogs, and some of them, unfortunately, like Councilor Weaver said, cannot be. But I do know that the application process to, to actually adopt a, a dog that's previously been in a fighting situation is super stringent, and there are requirements around ongoing work with trainers, ongoing work with behaviorists. And so it, it seems very much like if someone were taking that on, that's a very responsible dog owner, that's someone who is willing to do that extra work. And so I'm, I guess I'm just, if, if there is someone who's willing to take that on, it's, it's a lot of work, and I know that we're talking about one or two people as opposed to, you know, someone who may have just rescued a dog and didn't know that, that it had been in a fighting situation. I think I'm just, I'm struggling with that a little bit because it does rule a lot of dogs out. So I don't know if there's anything really to answer it. I'm just kind of sharing my opinions on that because the, the process to do that is so stringent. I, I know that there are some cities that require extra licenses, you pay an extra fee yearly, and, you know, have, everything's on record. I don't know if that's something we could consider, but just wanted to share that as well. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and I, I am trying to understand better this idea that a dog with a history of fighting, and how does our community service officers know that a particular dog has a history of fighting? And so I guess that, that kind of leads to the, the request for an exemption. If we have, if we know of a dog that has a history of fighting, and I'm not sure where that information comes from, whether it's a database that we access through the animal shelter, but if we know that this dog has a history of fighting, are we requiring that dog owner to, to manage the dog in a different manner than somebody that owns another breed?
So, so the question, the first question was, how do we determine if an animal has been a fighting animal? Would our community service officers be able to give any?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't know that.
No.
We don't get that information, so I understand the question. Obviously, there's a concern for anybody who might come across the dog and not understand the history of the dog, but that gets, you know, that, that can certainly cause conflict with people who are trying to rescue the dog. I think my, you know, I might hearken back to the kangaroos again, but, you know, we, we certainly were able to put a lot of restrictions on the kangaroo owners because while not, you know, a dangerous breed of kangaroo, they certainly presented their own unique problems. So we were able to do that with them. Here, I don't think you would have, based on the recommendation, that you would have that same level of accountability for the, for the animals, and you would hope the person would house them differently and make sure they were housed properly and that sort of thing. I think it just relies on the community to do it.
So yeah, I guess that's the question. How do you request an exemption for something that you haven't been, there's no evidence that you, you do have a dog that's a former fighting animal, but nobody knows that but you?
Yeah, there's, there's no good answer to that. I mean, I suppose it would go with any animal that entered in, illegal animal or an animal that was in, you know, certainly brought up differently to fight, but we wouldn't know if there was a boa constrictor in town until somebody told us. And so sometimes that's the hazard of being a CSO. They, they are often surprised by what they come across, so.
I can imagine. So yes, I, I believe that we do not need to amend the code at this point.
Councilor Holte.
I'll be super short. I, I'm just in alignment with the staff recommendation here, in part because, you know, somebody who might have this type of dog might jump jurisdictions to, you know, avoid, you know, being held accountable for having a dangerous dog. So I, I think I'm comfortable with how we're currently defining it and not creating an exemption here. So I'm just supporting the staff recommendation for a couple of different reasons.
Seeing nobody else, I'm going to ask for a consensus that we go to staff's recommendation on number four. See that? Moving on to item number five.
All right, this is actually not item number five. Surprise. So we wanted to briefly touch on this because this was something we spoke about with council at the last study session. Colorado legislature passed HB 251180 banning the sale of animals in public spaces. At our last meeting, staff presented a proposal to allow the limited sale of animals in public spaces, and council reviewed that and asked staff to return with a more detailed proposal. We had some more discussions with our great friends at Foothills Animal Shelter, and after continuing to review the legislation, we came to the determination that HB 251180 allows livestock sales and animal shelter slash rescue sales in public spaces, which generally aligns with the city's goals and our intent of what we were trying to do with the previous update. Therefore, because we felt like 1180 aligns with what we want to do anyway, there's no additional action needed from the council on this recommendation. So unless there's any questions, I'll move on to item number five.
Councilor Holte.
Thank you. I think I was the one who asked for us to take a look at this, and I actually was interested in just banning animal sales regardless of if it was on public private property or public, public or private property. And that's still actually something I am interested in. We have reputable, we've got Foothills Animal Shelter, we've got amazing, like, purebred rescues throughout the Rocky Mountain region. If you've got an animal you need to relinquish, or, you know, you can certainly, like, rehome an animal. I, I just really feel like the, the selling of domesticated animals is just sort of not in line with certainly my values and, and how, you know, I, I, I see animals. So I just want to name that. And in thinking about this today, I'm curious if, if I were to breed my dog, she would have the cutest puppies ever, they would go for $10,000 each. If, if I'm, you know, good breeders, you know, those dogs sell for thousands of dollars a puppy, would, would a breeder need to be licensed?
We have a kennel license.
A kennel license?
They would need to be licensed by PACFA, the Pet Care, the Pet Animal Care and Facilities Act. It's a licensing and inspection, inspection program for the state.
So is there, is there any reason why we couldn't prohibit the private sale of domesticated animals without a license in the city?
That is what this bill does.
It says in public spaces.
So as part of that, and it's just, we just didn't include that level of detail, the bill does require that you have to be licensed to do personal breeding.
Okay.
On private property.
But if I decided to sell my three dogs, I could still sell them for 100 bucks each?
What I have in my notes here from the animal shelter is that PACFA requires licensure for persons breeding dogs or cats above hobbyist quantities, which in combination with animal control's ability to intervene for animals and hazardous or unsanitary conditions, generally addresses potential welfare concerns for such sales.
Okay, so I could still sell my dogs for 100 bucks each? Okay. Well, I think it would be hard for us to enforce it, but I just want to name, what I had to bring back was looking at a total ban on this. So, so this is, this is a move in the right direction, and I certainly So, so this is, this is a move in the right direction, and I certainly hope people will relinquish dogs to organizations that are really well established for rehoming dogs and cats and pets appropriately to, to save in hospitable places. So thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
Just to add to that, thank you for bringing that up, everybody. I agree with you. But you, we do allow livestock.
Correct.
Okay. We're just, we were saying, we were saying domesticated animals, and I just wanted to make sure that livestock from domesticated.
Since there was no ask for recommendation or no, no consensus, we're moving on. Item number five.
Excellent. The next item is childproof structures for dangerous dogs, which is now defined as dangerous animals. We brought this one forward to city council at the last meeting, and we skipped over it essentially because we had some definition cleanup that we wanted to do with dangerous dogs and animals. So we didn't actually get to address this one or discuss it with city council at all. So we're happy to now. So according to the code, dangerous dogs, and now animals, must be kept in escape-proof enclosures. Other cities require that these enclosures prevent any accidental entry, is the language that they use. This ensures all necessary safety features are required that might not be specifically called out in the code. So our recommendation is to adopt this best practice language, requiring that outdoor enclosures for dangerous dogs, now animals, be designed to prevent accidental bite entry by anyone, including children.
Counselor Weaver.
Do you have a recommendation on a cage that is appropriate?
No, I do not currently have a recommendation on appropriate cage.
I'm just, that will be a question that if, if someone is in this situation, they will say, well, what do I need to get? And so we might want to clarify exactly what that safety thing is, because I'm sure somebody sells it somewhere, but otherwise people will be making up a childproof enclosure, if that makes sense. So, so I just think there should be recommendations on exactly what that looks like.
Research.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So this is if the animal has been reported and it's gone through the judicial process and deemed dangerous, then they have to implement these precautions.
Correct.
Okay. And so are, are we going to establish what the parameters are around the enclosures? Or what kind of guidance would we provide if we're, if we're enforcing that?
Yeah, so this is the recommended definition, which provides some guidance to them. I imagine that in our conversations with them, we can provide some additional guidance on what exactly would be required to prevent accidental entry by anyone, but we don't need to necessarily do that in the code.
Okay, so you would create, you would create them based on moving forward with this recommendation? And so it would just, yeah, I didn't want it in the code, but you have guidance as to like what would be expected? Okay.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, I'm going to ask for consensus that we move forward with staff recommendation on item number five. All right, we have that. Moving to item number six.
All right, this one is similar to the last one in that we just didn't get to touch on it last time. We skipped over it as well, so happy to present it to city council now. It is the transfer of dangerous dogs slash animals. Dangerous dog owners may only currently transfer or sell their animals to family. When we were taking a look at this, we felt like it prevented dogs from being placed with other responsible caretakers that might not be a part of their family but live here in the city of Wheat Ridge. So we propose updating this language to allow that transfer to any responsible caretakers in addition to family. Those responsible caretakers would be verified by the city's CSOs. And what that would look like essentially is we would look at our history with that individual. If they had a history of animal related issues with the city, they wouldn't be considered a responsible caretaker. Otherwise, they likely would. And so our recommendation is to go ahead, update the code, expand it to allow the transfer of dangerous dogs or animals between families, members, or responsible caretakers approved by the city.
Any counsel?
Thanks. I'm seeing in here, council may choose to remove the owner's right to transfer a dangerous dog to immediate family members, allowing transfers only to responsible caretakers. I would support that we just only allow transfer to responsible caretakers and remove the families. It could be that the family is a responsible caretaker, but I think if the intent here is to, you know, increase the likelihood that the dog's getting placed with a responsible caretaker, I mean, family is like, like, you know, a lot of apples don't fall far from trees. So I would, I would actually propose that we strike families and just say, allow the transfer to responsible caretakers. And that could be family member qualifies as that, or it could be somebody else. But we're assuming families are good responsible caretakers, and if we're not actually confirming that, then we're not actually achieving the intent, I think, of what this is trying to accomplish. So that, that would be my proposal, and I would like to hear from others.
Counselor Weaver.
I'd like to support that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to ask for consensus that we move forward with staff's recommendation minus the family part, and we go with just responsible caretaker. We have that. Moving forward to item number seven.
All right, next we have the possession of dangerous dogs slash animals and aggressive dogs slash animals. So sections 417A and 418A address the possession of these animals. When we took a look at this language at the last council meeting, council reviewed it and felt it was very confusing. We had a discussion with the city's prosecutor, and based on that discussion, we felt like the language was written in a way to be legally sound, and it is, but it's very, it still is very confusing to readers. So what we've tried to do here is to update the language so that it's not actually creating a substantive change, but it's clearing it up, making it a little bit easier for the reader to understand, which is in alignment with council's request. So currently, the language says it is unlawful for a person who is a dog owner to keep, harbor, or possess a dangerous dog within the city. And it says the same for aggressive dogs in the other part of the code. But in each of those sections afterward, it then goes on to explain exactly how a, a dangerous dog or aggressive animal could be kept in the city. And so that's where the source of the confusion is, is that it starts off saying, this is illegal, but here are the ways that you could do it. So we proposed an update to the language, and here's an example. Our proposed language update would be to say it's unlawful for any person to keep, harbor, or possess a dangerous dog within the city. Notwithstanding this prohibition, a court may authorize the possession of such an animal if the owner complies with requirements of 417E and 417F, as well as any other reasonable conditions imposed by the court. And we hope that this update makes it a little bit more clear to people that what we're saying is that it's illegal to have a dog be dangerous, and you can be convicted of having a dangerous dog. But once you're convicted of that, you can keep it if you adhere to these regulations. We spoke with our city prosecutor, and they felt like this was an appropriate update. But again, wasn't making a substantive change, but made things just a little bit more clear for your average reader. So our recommendation is to amend these sections appropriately to provide greater clarity concerning the allowance and keeping of aggressive and dangerous dogs slash animals.
Counselor Weaver.
So does that mean if my dog is deemed aggressive, I can stay in Wheat Ridge with my dog as long as I comply?
Correct.
Is that, is that what I'm, what I'm understanding?
Come up on, you decided in this court for
Right.
Dangerous dog.
Right.
And you're convicted because you're convicted.
But I couldn't if I had been convicted somewhere else, and I, and it's a known dangerous dog, I can't move to Wheat Ridge with that dog.
Well, sticking just with the first fact pattern, which is that you've got a dog in Wheat Ridge, and it's, you know, there, there are complaints, and you're, pardon me, you're cited in the news court.
Right.
And there's conviction.
Okay.
The social policy at work here is, okay, you're convicted, but that does not mean that once convicted, all of those dogs have to leave the city. The court can impose these rather lengthy, if you've seen them.
Right.
Series of conviction, of conditions. I noticed that the, the list for a dangerous dog is longer, as it probably should be, the list of conditions.
Because it's
Sure, because it's more, more dangerous.
It's worse.
It's a little shorter for aggressive dogs, but that's how you, 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 you get convicted, but you're, one of the conditions of the order obviously is allowing you to keep the dog under these conditions, and then that allows the court to monitor the continued compliance. The one thing I think I would suggest, I realize Donna, the prosecutor, has seen this language, but the one thing I think I'd suggest removing is the word reasonable from conditions imposed by the court, because what you're doing is saying, well, we get to second guess what the judge said in, in the case of my dog, judge said, besides these standard conditions, I'm going to impose this on you, Mr. Dog. And I don't think that me as the, as the defendant in that case gets to say, well, that's not reasonable. You know, the court gets to say that. If I don't like that, I'm welcome to appeal the court's conviction and those conditions up to district court, but I don't think that it ought to be in our code for that reason.
Okay. And I'm just curious, can I ask the question? How many dangerous dogs do we have in Wheat Ridge? I mean, how often does a dog get deemed aggressive and/or dangerous to the point where we would have to go in and make sure that they had a childproof cage and all of these other things that we're talking about? Like, are there 100?
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that.
Okay.
You assess the dog on its actions, any history involved in the dog, was there any kind of provoke, you know?
I mean, do you keep a list of, of these dogs that have not made it through, you know, have, have been called dangerous at court? And I, I'm just curious about the efficacy of, of sort of.
Yeah, these are your?
Yeah.
It's a case we have to win in court, if we, you know, write a bid on a dangerous dog, we have to have the burden of proof provided to the judge to make that decision that it's a dangerous dog.
But so how many?
If it doesn't meet that needs, then it's an aggressive dog.
There's no specific number, but I can tell you from daily reports that some of the dogs come from our unhoused population, so they're out there unleashed, and they can be aggressive or dangerous.
Okay.
In that, so we do see, I think, you know, our CSOs deal with that. I don't want to say regularly, but certainly a couple times a month, and then some of those are written in, and some of them aren't, based on their assessment of the dog. So overall, it's, it's not a huge problem, I guess, to get at the crux of your question.
Sure.
But, you know, we have different populations that treat animals differently.
Yeah.
And that certainly creates, you know, a mixed bag. So we, we do have a problem. It's just not very big, but it is out there.
I appreciate knowing that. Are these things actually dealing with that issue?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Alm.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I always like to bring up a different scenario. When I was a kid, I had a friend who, whose dad was a police officer, and they had a police dog. That police dog was not a family pet. It was kept in a barn, and we were under strict orders to never ever go near that barn. So was it dangerous? I would, I would assume so. And so if, you know, there could be ex-military or, you know, an ex-police officer dog, these dogs, these persons have not been convicted of any crime, they're just, they have some retired dogs that were trained to do something specific. So would that fall under the, the purview of the, the court? Would, uh, you'd have to go to the court and say, hey, we have this dog, we want to stay in Wheat Ridge, it's had training to take down suspects, it's a dangerous dog, and we'll.
Well, that, that implicates the, or refers to the ability of the court beyond just the laundry list of standard conditions to fashion a condition that's specific to that case. And judges do that all the time, because they look at the defendant, and they've heard the testimony, and they're able to really, you know, add conditions that, that are more than just the stock conditions. So if that came up to me as the, as part of the judge, I'd be able to evaluate that. And if I felt it was in the interest of the dog and the community and the safety of the community, I'd be able to probably impose a condition. Law allows that.
Thank you.
Are you asking if they have to declare that dog? If they came in with a military patrol dog or a police patrol dog or something of that nature?
Well, yeah, that'd be, that would be a good thing. I don't know if they would or not, but, or, yeah, or if, you know, if the police officers have a dog that's trained and they live in Wheat Ridge, and it's, you know, it's been trained.
If it's an active dog, most jurisdictions will say that they have to coordinate with the local agency to let them know that that dog is within, within the agency. Certainly, if that dog gets out, that can be a problem, and that's not unheard of. But as far as a retired dog, I would think that, that on their outprocessing of the dog, they would evaluate the dog's aggressiveness at that point. Obviously, not all police dogs are used for patrol, so it might be a drug dog or something else. And then at that point, we would rely on them to make a decision if they're going to confront the city with the information they have or not.
Thank you.
Counselor Holte.
Thanks. I've shared this story before, but one of my first interactions with the city was because my dogs got out of the yard, and one of my dogs bit the neighbor's dog. And I just like want to share my experience because I think it puts a lot of this into context, and I'll just say I support what's being proposed here. But the CSO came to my house, like, met the dogs, interacted with them, like, based on that assessment, like, clearly one of my dogs was just big and dumb, and the other one was an Australian and shepherd mix. And anyway, like, that interaction was like really helpful. I came to animal court, the Australian and shepherd mix who bit the neighbor's dog was deemed an aggressive dog. And so we had, we had to put up a beware of dog sign on our front door, like, there were some things that we had to do. I took her to training, like, it was, you know, this provision allowed me to keep my beloved dog who doesn't like other dogs. And, and it was just really, you know, responsible of the city and worked with me, like, assessed actually how dangerous my dogs were. So I just want to share that personal experience in that there is a lot of discretion that goes into the actual, like, meeting of the animals, understanding the situation. And so I appreciate that these provide some, like, they tether the clarity that we are actually, like, working to keep, like, animals and people together if there's responsible animal ownership. So I just want to recognize, like, good work from the city, and, and I did eventually get a take the beware of dog sign down. So anyway, I just wanted to share that story.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a follow-up question on the situation. If, if there is a member of our unhoused population that has a dog and it's deemed aggressive, how would that person go about following this rule? Or what usually happens, I guess? That's probably a better question when that's encountered.
What, what would happen if it was deemed an aggressive or a dangerous dog? Yeah, I mean, it would certainly be the discretion of the CSOs whether we needed to take that animal from the person. They don't have a place to quarantine it, so if there's a bite, usually it goes to Foothills, am I speaking out of turn, Phil? You want to comment, because you guys deal with that all the time, but.
You have to look at the environment and where the dog is. I mean, bottom line, if he's on quarantine, we can't let that dog bite anything or anyone within that quarantine, otherwise it defeats the purpose. So if they can't verify that they can keep this dog isolated to family members only, then we may have to take out the shelter, and they may have to quarantine it on their bill. If that's the way we protect the safety of everybody involved, that neighborhood and non-family members. We've had people that said, you know what? I have people coming here all the I have people coming here all the time. And I'm sorry, I can't quarantine this dog correctly. So, you know, we take the route of, you know, find a place that you can go to or we can go to Foothills Animal Shelter and combine it up there just fine.
It may be if we find that, that dog has had several incidents, we might ask them to voluntarily surrender the dog, uh, as a dog that they're not training properly or handling properly in the, uh, within the city limits. So I think they do, do a lot, have a lot of conversations with, you know, is this a dog that you want? Is it a dog that you really, um, are going to train and take care of? Or is this dog best, um, in somebody else's care and custody? So that is something that they do turn over from, you know, probably a smaller percentage of time, but enough to, to mention it here.
Uh, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and, uh, that does, uh, raise a very good question and I, um, I appreciate the, the approach that, um, our CSOs take to these sorts of situations. My question then is, um, as, when, when staff considers the issue and prepares a, a staff report, uh, for, uh, any sort of code changes we're looking at, I would appreciate, um, a bit of data on, on the, the sort of breadth of the issue. Um, we, it would seem like we have an archive of, of court records for proceedings that have happened. Uh, if somebody comes in with a, a dog that, uh, there's been a complaint about, and if that particular dog is declared to be, uh, dangerous or aggressive, um, there is a record. So I would appreciate when we get to the point where we're looking at legislation, that we support that with some data that shows whether this is a, um, a fairly significant problem or it's, uh, something that, um, is, uh, is, is minor but still needs to be addressed. Thanks.
Mr. Doll, do you want to recommend, or, uh, repeat your recommendation, uh, for what we should strike out of this?
Surely the, the consensus could be the staff recommendation to suggest that
I'll just so consensus, uh, do we have a consensus for that? All right, we do. Uh, moving on to item number eight.
The next item is swine in the city of Wheat Ridge. So swine are currently allowed in properties zoned, uh, A2. Uh, this is something that council requested, uh, that we bring back to them, um, from last study session with an option to prohibit swine. And the reason for that is because they may cause odor, sanitation, or other nuisances that may be in conflict with modern suburban, uh, living standards and quality of life. Um, we did want to clarify that if council took staff's recommendation here tonight, pot-bellied pigs would still be allowed through the cheese exemption process. We don't really consider them swine, they're more of a household pet. Um, but our recommendation, uh, is to, uh, go ahead with council's request and amend the municipal code to prohibit keeping swine as a domestic animal in the city of Wheat Ridge.
Counselor Dozen.
So I see that it's, uh, allowed in A2, why not A1? Is that, is that because it's in more residential areas for keeping swine? Okay. And how, do you know of how many swine owners there are in Wheat Ridge? Has it been an issue?
Not many. I think we used, uh, you, we used to have more. It sounds like we're pretty limited now.
I couldn't name them.
Counselor Weaver.
I'm, I'm supportive of this. I just, I think as we get into talking about, um, zoning areas, there's just less and less stuff that's zoned ag anymore in the city of Wheat Ridge, and I don't know if we should be tagging rules to zoning, um, because we never downzone back to agriculture, ever. It only gets upzoned. So, so that's, and that's going to also impact the next conversation we have. So that would be my only sort of thing is to maybe not think about the, the zone, but maybe we, I, I don't know. But not do it by zone. Is there another designation? I mean, there's so few, but I, I can't imagine people
Yeah, I mean, zoning's typically easier to regulate and monitor because, right? There's boundaries and, but, you know, maybe there's other ways. I think our new city plan really looks at
I mean, do you want to do it by acreage? Do you want to do it by acreage?
Acreage, well, that, that's what we're recommending. I think that we have some recommendations based on size of properties.
I, I would just say
Not necessarily for swine. The recommendation for swine is not to allow any, so, um, unless, are you suggesting?
Well, it's saying, it's saying, uh, oh, completely prohibited, okay. Sorry. Yes, thank you.
So, so we're clear, we're not talking about zoning, we're talking about the entire city, right?
Right, we're, we're
In this situation.
We're going to prohibit swine. Do we know if there's any swine that we will have to grandfather in or deal with in the city of Wheat Ridge?
We don't know.
Well, we're going to find out.
We'll find out.
We should probably be ready if we decide they're not allowed.
Okay. Back to Counselor Dozen.
Uh, I'll, I'll reserve my question for the next item, please.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to ask for a recommendation that we go, or a consensus to go with staff's recommendation on item number eight. Looks like we have that. Before we get to our main event tonight, I'm going to say it's been almost, geez, it's been two, almost two and a half hours. Uh, we're going to take a 10-minute break and, or let's just make it a 13-minute break and be back at nine o'clock.
We are on to item number nine in Agenda Item Number Two. We'll kick it back to Cole.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Stites. So the last issue pertaining to the animal code tonight is roosters in the city of Wheat Ridge. So you've heard a lot from members of the public on roosters, but I'll just go over what some of the reasons are why people may keep roosters. They are well-known for their benefits in protecting hens from, whether it's chicken hawks or other animals, maybe foxes or what have you. They may be present in the city of Wheat Ridge. They're also known to help maintain flock order. Of course, you know, the birds and the bees, they help fertilize eggs. They're also used as natural alarm clocks for some people. In our discussions with community service officers, we also learned that some people are using them as security. If you happen to go on a property where there is roosters, sometimes it may behave like a dog and try to alert people that there's someone or something in the area that it's not familiar with. And then, of course, there's the cultural and traditional reasons why people may keep roosters. It may be something they've done in their family for a long time, or in certain cultures place more significance on having a rooster. It's more valuable to them. The issue is that roosters may also create a nuisance for neighbors, and we've certainly heard from community members on that tonight as well. We do want to make it clear that roosters and poultry are generally permitted and regulated within the municipal code here in the city. They are allowed in both residential and agricultural areas. The city does receive occasional nuisance complaints related to crowing from roosters. Crowing, like dog barking, is a nuisance when it's frequent, loud, and disruptive. We essentially treat crowing and dog barking in the same way, where again, it can be a nuisance, but it's not inherently a nuisance. So just to run through what the typical standard process is for addressing rooster-related issues. And we certainly have one here in the city of Wheat Ridge. Our community service officers are certainly experienced and comfortable working with their standard operating procedure on these issues. Usually, we get notified of a rooster noise nuisance from a complaint from a neighbor who's concerned about it. Our community service officers will reach out to the reporting person if they provide contact information. If it's just an anonymous report, then typically our community service officers will make some time to go and visit the area. They'll hang out for a little bit. They'll see if they can hear anything or experience the same nuisance. If they don't hear anything, they move on, and there's no one to report back to because it was an anonymous complaint. But if there is a reporting property, then our community service officers will check out the area. They'll get back in touch with the reporting property. They'll ask them questions about what type of noise it is. Is it barking? Is it crowing? What's the day and the time that the activity is occurring? Where's the location and the source of the noise? Are they able to identify who the owner of the animal is or which property it is? Are they able to describe the animal in question? Has that person made any attempt to make contact with the animal owner and settle it through neighbor-to-neighbor relations? Do they have any video or audio evidence to provide community service officers to demonstrate that there is a noise nuisance issue presence? After the initial questions to the reporting property, we will try to make contact with the animal owner. We'll provide some general information about the complaint that's been issued, about, you know, what times people are saying that this is an issue, you know. So we might go and say, hey, we've heard that crowing in the mornings has been an issue. We'll explain the reason of the contact and what the entire process is. And typically, when our CSOs make contact with the owner of the animal, they're unaware of the disturbance. So sometimes just making them aware that there's a disturbance and that their neighbors are upset about it is enough to reach compliance. But that's not always the case. In times where compliance isn't so easy, we give them a two-week compliance period. The owner is asked to correct the situation. And, you know, that may be different things depending on the type of animal or if it's a rooster. They have a variety of ways to try and correct the situation, whether through soundproofing, crow collaring, et cetera. Maybe there's other environmental things that they can do. The CSOs will continue to try and get evidence that there's a noise nuisance in place, whether that's through gathering video and audio evidence from neighbors or taking it themselves. But we're really looking to see, again, is that nuisance constant, unprovoked, and disruptive? And it's not written in the code, and we can certainly add it to the code, but we do have standards for what this is. So an example of what would be a standard that we use frequently is, is it continuous for more than 20 minutes at a time? And that combined with the noise severity helps us determine if it's a nuisance. Or if it's not constant, you know, is it every two to five minutes for an hour or two length of time? Those are the things that help us, combined with the impact of the noise itself and how loud it is, determine if it fits the definition of a nuisance. And if it does, and that two-week compliance period has passed and they haven't come into compliance with the municipal code, then we issue them a summons to court. That case goes through the court process. The judge reviews it, and there may be penalties associated. But generally, we try to handle these as a case-by-case investigation because all of the details, and this is very detail-specific, are different in every single case. But we really try to do a great job with initial outreach to the complaining parties, the animal owners, do a lot of fact gathering, and we really, really strive to get voluntary compliance before taking legal action. Because that's the best way to do it in terms of getting compliance. It's better to get it voluntarily rather than through a court order. It's quicker. There's better resolution. So there's a lot of advantages to it. So that's what our standard process is that we have in place now. The next slide essentially just goes over what I just outlined. We have heard from some residents who have been experiencing rooster noise issues. They've taken a look at the code. They feel like the code may be unclear. And so we feel like there are some things that we could do to improve the code. That'll be one of the options that we've presented to council tonight. The first one, revise the code to clarify that roosters are permitted and nuisances are regulated. We can provide some details on how the nuisance is regulated as I just outlined. We could allow, as an alternative to that, we could allow a limited number of roosters or no roosters at all in residential areas and more or none in conforming agricultural properties, which are defined as agricultural properties at least one acre in size. If it's ag and it's less than an acre, then it's essentially treated as residential in the city of Wheat Ridge. And the third and final option is that we could prohibit rooster citywide, which would be in alignment with our neighboring municipalities. So we provided a few options for the council there to consider. We do have a staff recommendation here, and it is to allow up to one rooster per property in residential areas and up to three per property in conforming agricultural areas of at least one acre in size. And the reason why we settled on that recommendation is we feel like, one, it's in alignment with what we're currently doing, so it's not a significant change. You would still be allowed to have roosters in residential areas, but they would be limited to one rooster per property. And the reason why we settled on that was because it would be easier for our community service officers to ensure compliance from the property owner and the animal owner. There's only one. It's just simply easier to make sure that that one rooster is conforming with the quality of life and the noise nuisance issues that are outlined in the municipal code. And then, we feel like because those agricultural conforming areas are larger, they're over an acre in size, there's more of a buffer between them and their neighbors, it'd be more appropriate to allow three per property in those areas. So that is the staff recommendation. We are happy to discuss it in more detail, answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Cole. Let's go to Councilor Weaver.
Thanks. Thanks, Cole. And thanks for everybody who's been doing a lot of work on this for the last several weeks. I appreciate the staff recommendation. I do feel like we're dealing with an issue that is a nuisance of one animal right now. And I am not fond of demonizing one animal across the board. So I'd like to support this recommendation, but I'd also like to really beef up and get specific. You know, we spent a lot of time tonight talking about all the manners and ways that we house dangerous dogs. And I feel like there is a way because a rooster is a nuisance. And it sounds like this rooster is not like my rooster, and it's not like some other roosters. And it could well be that it is a true nuisance issue, and it has to be dealt with. But on both sides, there needs to be a way that that person who has the rooster can say, okay, I've done this. Is this working? I've done this. Is it right? Everything that you just described, Cole, and make sure that's documented so that we can deal with whether it's a nuisance dog, whether it's a nuisance smell. I mean, these are all things that I've dealt with at my farm over the years. And, you know, it can be smell, it can be sight, it can be noise. And I think that there's a way that we can deal with an isolated animal that is making a lot of noise, because a horse can do the same thing, a goat can do the same thing, a turkey can do the same thing. So that's what I would say my recommendation is. I am really against a ban of roosters for lots of reasons, but I just want to mention a few. First of all, as it was said earlier this evening, when you don't have a rooster, I have a flock of over 100 chickens. And I have a rooster. I also raise roosters for meat birds that get slaughtered about at the time they crow. But what happens when you start banning urban animal, or urban farm animals, is it's a slippery slope. And we have spent a lot of time over the last 15, 20 years in Wheat Ridge really trying to create an environment that both is open for people who want to experience regenerative agriculture, which means animals and growing things, and have a wonderful suburban city atmosphere where we deal with nuisances. And so I want to make it clear that I'm not saying, you know, free-for-all all the time for any farm animals because we do live in an urban environment. But I do think we should call it what it is in this specific example. A ban for legislating one rooster that is causing lots of problems. There are many roosters in Wheat Ridge that don't cause those problems. I keep my rooster inside until nine, and then he comes up, and he doesn't happen to be that loud of a rooster. So, you know, I have not had to deal with that issue. So I just, I really question demonizing or banning one species, similar to the conversation with dogs. When you have hens and you don't have any roosters, you will have a hen that starts to crow like a rooster. I guarantee it, and sometimes they're twice as loud. So it's a slippery slope, and I just, I don't feel like banning roosters is where we need to go right now. We need to deal with this noise issue that is affecting neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I want to look at this as, how do we, how does this compare to dogs? Because we don't, and how many, I guess the first question is, is how many dogs can be on a property? Is it unlimited? Three?
Three adult dogs.
Yeah, three adult dogs. I just look at this, I think it should be as fair as possible. If we allow three dogs, I'm not, I don't have an issue having three roosters on the property. But I do have an issue with looking at, there's a section 4-3 that says that the minimum fine is $25. It goes up to $1,000. I have an issue with, there's neighbors, there's community in here. People that have come in here, they're telling us, they're in tears, that they can't take the noise. And then, what we're telling them is that, well, wait two weeks and we'll see if it gets better. I think if there's a noise and the community officer is out there and hears the noise, there should be a fine. That's how I feel. I feel that there should be a fine, and that fine should get escalated every time that there's a noise. We're going to be talking about another topic here, about, you know, the fine escalation. I know we've looked at short-term rentals of getting to the root of the problem. And this, to me, this is really a behavior problem. I'm not necessarily in favor of banning the roosters. I'm in favor of, you know, having some fines, and the fines keep going up if it keeps causing an issue with noise. It doesn't matter if it's a dog, it's a rooster, any type of animal that's causing that issue. You know, if there's somebody playing, you know, loud music, you know, late at night. We need to have a community that everybody can, you know, get along in the community. And it's the behavior that I really want to take a look at. I hope that, and I'm not super in favor of, it says, you know, owners are given the opportunity to address the issues through soundproof, coops, crow collars. I just, I mean, is that something that we do with dogs? You know, that we say like, hey, you got a dog that keeps barking? I don't want the city to mandate, this is how you need to make your dog be more quiet. I think that's on the owner. I think ours should be more on the, if your dog is being noisy, is causing disruption, there's a fine, and that fine's going to get pretty heavy. And you're going to have to make some tough decisions down the road of either, you know, get that animal trained or something else. But that's how I feel. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of outright banning the roosters. I'm in favor of penalizing bad behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And I'm glad that we're addressing this issue because I do think that it comes down to a noise nuisance and how we measure that. I mean, we've talked pretty extensively during my tenure on council in regards to noise. Same with the next issue that we will be addressing. I don't believe in banning domestic animals from residential areas. I agree with Councilmember Weaver in regards to it's a slippery slope. Many of us that live in residential areas, including myself and Councilmember Weaver, have urban farming. We've heard from others that do as well. I think this one particular issue is behavioral and should be addressed through the ordinance. And if we need more teeth or clarity around decibel levels or penalties for that, I think we could discuss that. And I also, I don't, I'm not for the recommendation of limiting them in agricultural areas, particularly because we have so few in Wheat Ridge left, and a lot of them are becoming planned residential developments. And at least as far as the zoning map that I'm looking at, I think very few properties with residential homes on it would get to that one acre in size. And maybe staff can disagree with me in that regard. But just looking at the property sizes on the zoning map, we have very few A1, even far less agricultural 2, which allows for heavier farming, like swine, apparently, but not now. Not now. That's why I didn't raise my hand. Sorry. That's all slippery slope. But I'd just like to hear in regards to like the noise nuisance, what is the protocol? Do we go out and measure it as if we do, you know, music at outdoor venues or restaurants that have outdoor music? Like, can you talk about that?
There's no decibel level currently assigned to the animal. We could and maybe on occasion do use that as sort of a guide to enforce what we are determining whether it's reasonable or not. It's really a reasonableness standard that we use. Is this, is this, and much like the noise ordinance, is this a normal noise? Is this a noise that is common in society, like a construction, which would exceed a decibel level, but is short-term unless it's Wadsworth in duration? But, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not intended to take away the noises that you would expect. It's intended to take away the noises that you might not expect to be there in the long term. So I think our folks use the reasonableness standard. Is this something you would expect in your neighborhood, in your house? Is it intrusive? Is it something that's annoying for the people? And that's a decision that generally I think they have to make on a case-by-case basis. So while we could, you know, it's difficult, as we've seen in the application of So while we could, it, you know, it's, it's difficult as we've seen in the application of decibel levels for, um, businesses and for amplified sound to where we measure it and how the background noise integrates with the noise that we're trying to measure. So it becomes very difficult. We'll talk more about that when the mufflers come up, I'm sure. But, um, we, we really just use a reasonable standard, I think, when we're out there applying the noise ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. There was a time when I was staying in a house in Northwest Number and the property next to me got a rooster. And that rooster crowed bright and early every morning. And it was like noticeable, like I noticed the day they got the rooster. But then I did not notice the rooster the rest of the day because that family had their TV on loud. It was like a summer and we didn't have air conditioning and so windows were open. So every other noise coming from that house was louder than the rooster the rest of the day. But I, you know, I, you know, I tried to think about like, what if this was my next door neighbor? And I, I really appreciate the presentation tonight because what I'm hearing is that the city does have tools to address this. And, you know, I've been involved in the city for about 13 years and this has not been a hot topic for 13 years. So we know we've got roosters throughout the community and they're, most roosters are not a problem. Or if they are, they're being addressed effectively by the policies that we have. So, um, I'm in support of the allowing up to one rooster per property in residential areas. I appreciate the reasoning behind that so that if there is an issue, the officer can know that it is this rooster that is being dealt with. I, I agree in escalating, escalating the fines. I think $25 is rarely a motivating factor, especially if you've got neighbors whose quality of life is like really creating real tension in the community. So I think, I know we're trying to bundle all of this up neatly into one animal update, but I think maybe fine escalation is something maybe we need to revisit since it wasn't presented as part of this, this bundle. But, but what I, what I'm hearing is that there's a real problem rooster in a neighborhood right now that is causing like real tension between neighbors. And, but I'm also hearing that the system's working, there's a summons. We'll see how it goes to court. But I haven't heard any rooster noise complaints in the six years I've been on council. I've somewhat regularly. So I guess I feel like citywide, it's just, it's not as a huge issue. This property is an issue, so I want to make sure that when we have a property like this where it is a real issue, that we've got due course. And then we also did hear a couple of weeks ago that just clarity on are roosters allowed? What we, what we don't allow roosters, we're just kind of silent because they're bundled in with, with poultry. So they're considered allowed. So more clarity on if they're allowed or not. So people who, when they're researching Wheat Ridge and if it's the right place for them can like clearly see if roosters are allowed. So, um, I'm, I'm in support of the one per property. I would get rid of the conforming agricultural areas and just say up to three per property on agriculture, on, on properties of at least one acre of size. Cause that could be inclusive of like a variety of different. And there what you're getting is just the compliance with like being able to keep the rooster and the chickens with enough distance from neighbors. And usually those properties are ones that are more engaged in animal husbandry and different type of farming activities, which I think are very much still a part of our community. I've heard tonight both the arguments on the same side that we are becoming more dense and more urbanized and we're rural and, you know, but at the end of the day, I think one of our core identities is that we are farmers and we have farms in our community and we want to support that whether they're small scale or, or large scale. So, um, I'm in support of this. I would just scratch conforming agricultural areas and just say properties of at least one acre in size.
Okay. Um, I just have a quick question. As this goes through the court system with a noise complaint like this, and it continues to happen while they're waiting for their summons date. So I think this one's like in October. If the rooster continues to crow, are they still being cited as that's happening?
Generally, no. We wait for the one case to matriculate. If we have the evidence for that, we wouldn't continuously cite somebody. I think the system is really geared towards, we have a complaint and we recognize the complaint. Now we need to get it in front of a judge and that judge will adjudicate it and then make decisions based on the input from the prosecutor and the citizens who are making the complaint. But we wouldn't necessarily continue to, to pile on. I think the judges don't view that favorably generally to say, why are you continuing to write citations? I haven't seen it yet. Now it just feels like you're, you're piling on citations. So that's been my experience with our judicial system. And though I don't know if you had a different experience, but that's generally the way we're handling these cases.
Yeah, that's basically what we follow. In certain, some secret situations, new witnesses come forward. So, you know, we can add them into the existing case, but we're not going to oversight them.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And I'll just be real brief on this one. I, I do not think prohibiting species of animal, um, to single them out is, is probably not a very good policy. And I, I do support the idea that agricultural, agriculturally zoned property would be appropriate for the, the additional number of roosters allowed. But I think the most important thing, and I completely support Councilmember Ohm on this. It is about behavior. It's about responsibility for the things that you are responsible for. And so with a, an established and clearly stated complaint process and citations that, that actually have impact, that is, is our, as far as I'm concerned, the preferred avenue.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'll be brief. Just wanted to recognize, uh, Counsel Weaver and thank her for her research and knowledge and everything that she's brought for us. I am definitely in favor of, of treating this as a noise complaint, just like we've discussed. I'm not in favor of, of outlawing roosters. And also would like to recognize, uh, Councilmember Holtein and her point about the, taking the agricultural zoning out of that. I appreciate that. So that's where I'm landing on that.
I'll go back to Counselor Weaver.
Thanks. Um, I also agree with, with Counselor Holtein's update of, uh, of taking out, because we don't, it doesn't actually say agricultural zones. It just says agricultural areas and we don't really have a definition for that. So let's just call it at least one acre in size. Is that, is that agreeable? Okay. I, I would just like to go back to a person's ability to show the code enforcement person that they are mitigating the issue. Cause I, I agree with, with Counselor Ohm in that, you know, rather than sort of coming up with, you need to keep this animal quiet between these hours and, and sort of all these different things. It's really on the onus of the person who has the animal. So I'm, I'm wondering, and I'm, I'm asking my, my fellow counselors. There's a couple of issues that have come up in my mind. First of all, we have a, we have a rooster that while we're waiting for a court date is, is, you know, should we, like the dangerous dog, do we quarantine that rooster in some way? Or the rooster gets kept inside or something like that? When it's a really, uh, a situation that is, is hot. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'm, I'm sort of throwing it out there. I'm also going to say there are times at my farm when animals are louder than others, like when, uh, babies are being born. And, um, you know, and turkeys are getting close to Thanksgiving. I, I just, I, I, I guess my question is, is code enforcement aware and sensitive to the fact that in, in the act of farming, there are noisier times that could be a rooster, a goat, a horse, any given thing? And, and just that we are thinking about that this noise is not constant, but sometimes at a time of year in agriculture. So there's that thought. And then just having the ability for a person, if I get a violation about noise and a nuisance, that I am able to then work with that code officer and say, okay, I'm keeping this animal in for 12 hours between this, this and time. I'm doing, you know, I'm, I've documented, so it's something that's measurable so that before I get these increased amount of fines or have to consider giving away slaughtering or, or transferring an animal off my property, that there has been time to say, okay, I've, I've mitigated this to what you've asked me to mitigate it to. Because a rooster is one thing, it's constant, but I, I think you all can understand it's a slippery slope. I have people who move into apartments all the time around my farm and I've had turkeys and chickens and goats, as there have been turkeys and chickens and goats on that property for about a hundred years continuously. And occasionally I will get a call for, um, a nuisance violation because of this noise. And, and it's not constant and it's not, so I guess I'm, I'm trying to say, I want to make sure on both sides there are ways to measure and to come back and say, okay, I'm keeping this nuisance animal inside or whatever it is at this time period. Or that upon negotiating with the code officer and court, that we are considering ourselves an agricultural community. And, you know, if I have, um, 10 baby goat kids born, they're loud. And they're loud for a couple of months in the spring. And most people love that noise unless they think it's me treating a child poorly, which sounds the same. So, so, and, and I, I mean, I'm bringing this up in levity, but we're dealing with a situation that has just gone, you know, zero to 10 very, very quickly. And, and people are upset on both sides. So I think having that sort of way to measure and mitigate and, and know that things are happening. Or if we have an animal that literally just won't stop crowing, you know, are they being kept inside? Do they need to be quarantined off a property until the decision? Because at one point I got a call that, you know, and that this person was, was going to slaughter this animal. And, and I said, you know, that's not actually how our, our system works. We don't, we don't require you to kill the animal before the, the court date. And so that's, that's a pressure on urban agriculture that is very, very real. When someone's upset at an animal, oftentimes the answer in their head is, you got to get rid of that animal now because that's a farm animal. And, and that's a real stressful thing when you're living in a community that, you know, I, I support 50 families with eggs in District Three. And, and, and those are, so I, I want to be able to be a good neighbor. So I want to be able to come back and say, okay, I hear you that this is an issue. I've done this and this and this and this before we go to court and sort of make this decision. Am I making any sense? I'm not going to belabor this. I just, I, I want us to have some flexibility on both sides of how do we have that conversation? Because it, it just got escalated on both sides really, really quickly. And I, I just, I felt sad for both sides.
Let's do this. Let's go for a consensus on staff's recommendation with Counselor Holtein's taking out the conforming agricultural part. Do we have a consensus on that?
I think we need the agricultural.
So that would allow for any property, whether it's residential or agricultural, above one acre to have up to three?
Yeah, I get it. Okay.
It's, yeah, it's not removing the actual, it's, yeah. So do we have a consensus for that? Okay. What's the fine schedule again? It starts at $25?
Well, it's, that's the minimum. It doesn't necessarily start there. It's up to the judge.
Okay. Is that something, is that something we can take a look at too? Or is that, uh, set by state law?
Uh, yeah, the jurisdiction, the municipal court, their, their fines are limited by state law. I think it's more than a thousand now. And I'll tell you that really, you know, commonly the municipal court judge doesn't go to the top right away ever. You know, really that, that's something that would take multiple charges to get to. It might be helpful. I'd appreciate maybe counsel thinking a little bit about the question of whether these cases could go to the administrative enforcement process that we have in Chapter Two. And you'll recall that the scope of that chapter says, okay, you can take these things to administrative enforcement, which is an AHO administrative hearing officer. It's faster than going to municipal court. And the hearing officer has fairly good authority to make decisions and impose fines or, uh, and there's an appeal to the municipal court. The reason I raise that is, the Councilmember Ohm and I think others have said, so great, we file a case and it's on the municipal docket next door. And the, the other side gets an attorney you asked for, and for a continuance for 30 days. And it's always granted. And then they change lawyers and there's another continuance. And meanwhile, I'm waiting three months to, to, to be in court. And sometimes it's not that long, but sometimes it is. The council adopted that administrative enforcement process a few years ago now to provide a somewhat more swift venue for, for certain things. But that code section, taking too long to say that, whole process is not available for every provision in the, in the code. It's got zoning, it's got various chapters. But what it doesn't have is, is Chapter Four on animals or Chapter 16 or any portion of that, where the main noise ordinance is. And the two noise provisions that would apply here are the section in 16103 that talks about, you know, unreasonable noise. And councils are very familiar with how that got enlarged to deal with the, the industrial noise issue we have. The other places is in the animal code where, where, uh, you know, barking dogs are addressed, which would be the more likely citation here if there were one. But those two chapters are not available to take to administrative enforcement. And the council could choose to have the whole chapter. They could choose to have just the sections that are at issue here, which is true. There are a couple of places where the administrative enforcement scope just calls out like one article or one set of sections in a given chapter. And I won't go through the whole list, but councils over the years made choices about what would be something that would be a better fit for administrative enforcement than municipal court. Don't know how the, the code enforcement officers feel about that as a tool versus going to municipal court. Might be a good question.
We've come a long way with, um, using the administrative citation process. It basically holds the city liable to, to provide burden of proof that they didn't overstand or overstay their boundaries on what they enforced on. And then if they didn't, it's up to the defendant to prove that they're not guilty. So it's a process that the city maintains a really good track record of success because we put the time in, we put the evidence in, the documentation, everything's there. And we win probably 95 to 97% of those cases when we do that. I don't think the average person comes into that knowing how much documentation is involved in proving guilt or, um, getting themselves off on a loophole. We used to lose some loophole cases early on in that process. We don't lose them anymore because we know the process. We, we train our officers to verify and validate everything that they're getting. We train our officers to verify and validate everything that they're getting, witness statements are not, they become their own witness, but there's no witness that wants to come forward. So we know the process, I'm just saying it's going to be, the burden of proof is going to be immense on the person, the defendant that comes into that to prove they're not guilty.
And that's slightly different, of course, from municipal court, you know, where the standard is the exact reverse, we're all innocent until proven guilty. It's a swifter process, and I wanted to make sure council kind of had that in mind. It's not something that has to be done right away. I perceive that, you know, or the consensus has been so far, that's over in the code section. How many can you have and under what conditions? The enforcement side, as pointed out by Councilmember Ohm and others, is, you can do nothing with the enforcement side.
Let's go with, let's go with some discussion on that. Councilor Holteens.
Thanks. I feel like we're getting into some nuance and complexity that I would prefer comes back to us. So I'd like to propose that we have a future study session that's looking at where we're adjudicating noise enforcement and more information on how the fines are assessed and what we could be looking at. So I'd rather that come back with some research and some context, because I think what Mr. Dolls just brought up is really, like, actually a thoughtful solution, but I'm also, it's something I'd rather have time to take a look at and consider. So I'd like to propose we add that to a study session if anyone wants to support me.
Do you have a consensus on that? We do, we'll add that to a future study session. Do we have any other discussion, Councilor?
Yes, thank you. So Councilmember Larson and I were just talking, so a clarifying question on the consensus in regards to the agricultural areas, will they be allowed without any kind of cap, even if they're not one acre? Or if it's Ag 1 or Ag 2 and it's less than an acre, is it considered a residential? Because that would...
I believe the consensus was to remove the Ag designation totally, and any property one acre or larger can have three roosters.
Right, but some of those Ag properties are not an acre.
And they would not be allowed then, according to this consensus?
We treat Ag properties that are less than an acre as residential.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, that's helpful. So that means any A1 or A2 properties under an acre would only be allowed one, even if they're agriculturally zoned?
Correct, it's not based on the zone.
Right, it's based on the size.
Yep.
All right, so we have a future study session for the administrative enforcement, we already have a consensus for number nine. So that is item number two. All right. Thank you, everybody. We are ready to move on to item number three, which I believe is mufflers, muffler regulation and enforcement.
Yeah. They need...
Meanwhile, can I have a break? What?
Thank you. I think we have a staff presentation.
Yeah, we do. Thank you, Mayor Protam. So Councilmembers Larson and Dozeman requested to bring this topic back to a study session, discussion on muffler regulations and enforcement. Division Chief, or did you want to introduce it? Or, okay, I'll turn it over to Chief first, he'll introduce it, then he'll turn it over.
So we have a somewhat briefer presentation for everybody, but what I would suggest is we always, when council makes a recommendation as a police department, we're always trying to find active solutions, but noise is a very difficult one, and so you're going to see this, sort of the nuances as Chief Kellogg goes through this, but just understand at the end, there's a lot of information about our research that you may find, may find answers to a lot of questions as to why we arrived at the points we did. I think it'll be explanatory as Chief Kellogg goes through, so, Chief?
I think it's great that a conversation about roosters segues into exhaust, which just, I love it. So I'm actually here today to discuss what has become an issue as it relates to loud exhaust in our city, and, oops. But the issue is the noticeable increase in vehicle-related noises, and these are due predominantly to modified exhaust systems, damaged exhaust systems. And interestingly enough, our commercial vehicles, some of the standard equipment that comes on those have been really one of the large culprits, I suppose is a fair way of calling it, as we move forward and deal with some of this. These issues are creating growing concerns. There's research out there here recently that would suggest it's a public health issue. It increases stress, it increases sleep disorders, heart disease, and it impairs learning in children related to some of the sleep disorders that it creates. The quality of life, and I think one of the questions that we have to consider, and we, I say you, have to consider, is whether this current position, and I'll discuss that in a minute, but the current position aligns with our community-focused intentions here in Wheat Ridge. And then lastly, but not certainly, not the end, there's certainly more, but the increased complaints to law enforcement. We talked about that earlier, but this basically occupies time for a law enforcement officer to address a variety of other things. Not that this is not an important topic, but there are potentially other ways to address this. Our current practices is that we enforce the muffler ordinances within, I'm sorry, the actual muffler issues within the adopted model traffic code, the 2024 model traffic code under 424225 briefly and within certain specs and specifications. The considerations that I'm offering today are just, these violations are difficult to enforce. The training, the ability to actually identify whether there is or is not a muffler on a vehicle is sometimes difficult with some of the newer cars and some of the newer designs. And then lastly, as we discuss technology, some of the things that are going to have to be considered is, has it developed to a consistent and useful tool? I've been privileged to be working really quite closely and become, I've developed some great resources with Ultimate, the folks that are doing our speed cameras. They, of course, invented many of these technologies, and one of the technologies that their TNE folks are doing or are looking at right now are the, some of the noise detection devices. At this moment, they're not willing to deploy because they are not able to types of face-to-face contacts, and interestingly enough with some of the, interestingly enough with some of the car clubs that we've been working to curtail some of their behaviors on the weekends, we have actually established a relationship with some of the leaders, and so we may have some impact as it relates to this. And then lastly, technology, we can, there's a couple different paths as it relates to the technology. We can immediately implement with what's out there, and I've outlined a few different options, a few different options have been outlined in the memo. Or we can monitor that technology's development to ensure that we put a good product out on the street that does exactly what it's supposed to do, and we could monitor its development and wait till it's fully, fully developed. I leave it to the group.
Okay. If I could just add, who is on the street? And I asked him, how long have you been doing traffic, more than 15 years? What do you know about the ordinance over here? And he said, well, I'm pretty sure that was because people complained about it, and we have some kind of ordinance, but we've never been able to actually enforce it, so we just put the signs up as a public relations, that was their take on it. So I'm hesitant to say that there's a great solution to this. It's a huge problem, we know that, without a great solution. And many times in law enforcement, we rush into technology that hasn't been vetted, ShotSpotter early on, I've been part of that when it wasn't that effective, and many others where it ends up just sitting on a pole somewhere and we don't use it, and we spend a lot of money for it. So I'm hoping that this does evolve into a technology that can be useful, but our challenge is really differentiating noise. And so it's not like a speeding car where we can see it compared to the other vehicles, we can use our visual acuity to measure it. A car in traffic is almost impossible. If we can isolate the car, there's a better chance to inspect it and to see whether or not it's in violation. In Maryland, where I come from, we had equipment repair orders. So if you were found to have an altered muffler, we'd just write you an equipment repair order. And for people to constantly change their muffler back to a standardized muffler costs them a couple hundred dollars. So one equipment repair order was enough, and it really wasn't a fine, it was just telling them they needed their vehicle to be inspected or their registration would be suspended. We don't have that tool here in Colorado, so we depend on individual officers to enforce. We're trying to create that time with our traffic enforcement tools right now to provide more time for officers to go out and engage in different types of enforcement, but it is very difficult, as we've seen, trying to measure noise at car washes, at specific amplified noise events, to pull the noise out and differentiate it from the background noise, especially when it comes to vehicles in traffic. So I just want to point out that we did do the research and check with our partner agencies to find the best solution, and basically, they all told us there is no best solution. So we're here to tell you that we could take action on any one of these fronts, but it's debatable about what our return on investment would be.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and this is an issue that I've been pursuing now for more than five years here in Wheat Ridge, that also indicates that I've done substantial research on this. And while I completely agree with both Chief Murtha and Division Chief Kellogg, that the technology may not be where it's reliable enough to produce the results that we hope, that technology is one of those things that continually advances, and that's the reason why I think we need to have something that is specific to the city of Wheat Ridge that allows us to take advantage of advancements in technology when they arrive. The issue here, very simply stated, is that we want to, I'm suggesting, with Councilmember Dozeman's support, that the city Wheat Ridge code be amended to require that all vehicles operated in Wheat Ridge be equipped with a muffler, and the definition of muffler will be coming. The issue is about noise. Excessive noise disturbs the peace and degrades our quality of life. The issue is not about imposing requirements on vehicle owners. The issue is not about increasing revenue. The issue is that vehicles operated without a muffler disturb the peace and degrade the quality of life. All cars and trucks, motorcycles, and commercial vehicles sold in the U.S. are equipped with more, one or more mufflers when they leave the factory. All 50 states have regulations that prohibit excessive vehicle noise. Vehicles operated without an adequate muffler, or those operated with a muffler modified to emit more noise than when they left the factory, are the issue. When a vehicle is operated without a muffler or is equipped with a cutout or exhaust resonator, the impulsive noise it emits, by any standard, is excessive and unnecessary. That noise exceeds established measurable maximum sound levels, and excessive sound levels have been proven to have an adverse effect on health and well-being. The issue is about noise and the impact excessive noise has on community peace and the quality of life. Council addressed the issue of excessive noise when it amended Section 16103 to, in the code, to respond to neighbor complaints about noise. We've heard from neighbors tonight concerned about another form of noise, and that's from roosters. So when we take in consideration the nature of a typical urban environment, noise that unreasonably disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, and public safety is a nuisance and something that needs to be addressed. There is nothing in our code that declares noise from an unmuffled car, truck, or motorcycle to be unreasonable. This proposal addresses that deficiency and recommends possible means of enforcement. It has been noted that the traffic code includes language that requires motor vehicles in Colorado to be equipped with a muffler, but I believe it is important for the city of Wheat Ridge to have something specific for our enforcement here. The other issue is that, oh, I'm sorry, the recommendation that I would make is that we revise the existing title within Chapter 13 to Article 11, I'll leave this up to our attorney. Otherwise, when we talk about how widespread this issue has become, and I believe it is particularly since COVID, that we see an increase in these issues of vehicle noise that have become more than just inconvenient, they are a nuisance, and they are a health hazard and a threat to public health. Cities from Newport, Rhode Island, Knoxville, Tennessee, Albuquerque, New Mexico, Philadelphia, PA, and Honolulu, Hawaii have all installed noise cameras in place. So the technology's out there, the effectiveness of it needs to be further studied, but I would like to, just at this point, point to New York City, the largest city with some 8 million people, and they know about urban noise. They interviewed a city council member from Brooklyn who said that, yes, we all live in New York City, we understand there's a certain level of noise that we have to deal with, but it should be within reason. The only complaint I've gotten as a city councilperson in Brooklyn, New York, is from constituents saying they want more noise cameras on their block. I believe this is something that we can take a positive step, and this will benefit all four districts within the city of Wheat Ridge, and the discussion about the technology that is employed to help with enforcement, I think is one that we can have, but I do believe that eventually, technology, like so many other things that come under that heading, will advance to the point where it will provide an efficient and direct means to enforce our noise ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you. So I have a few questions. Chief or Kellogg, you can answer, I think. What is the complaint? Like, how often do we receive complaints of noise regarding mufflers? Like, how prevalent is it?
With respect to vehicle noise? I'd say it's not frequent. It may be, in my opinion, I guess, from the people that I've talked to, and I'll defer to Chief Kellogg, is many people have given up on it, maybe as a complaint, because it is pervasive. So we don't receive a lot, but we understand that that doesn't, it's not indicative of potentially the level of the problem, if you will. I don't know, Chief, if you have a different opinion on that.
I would offer, in looking at statistics, it's going to be below 5% of our cost per service over the course of a year.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the 2024 model traffic code, is it an offense if they have altered their muffler? So this would, if we were to enact a noise ordinance specific to mufflers, would that be an offense that you would be able to pull someone over for, whereas right now, it's just kind of an added citation?
It's a primary violation. You can pull somebody over for excessive noise or an altered muffler if you can establish, you know, reasonably that you believe that. But, you know, again, it's hard because... But, you know, again, it's hard because, number one, you either have to be in traffic on the highway and identify which car is making that noise, and are they over the limit? Sometimes it's obvious if somebody's altered their exhaust systems, to Counselor's point. Everybody comes with a certified exhaust system. And then, you know, we see all the shops that will change it. Sometimes they're made to look like the original, and sometimes they just remove the baffling from the exhaust system to make them louder. But they, they are required to, to come with the exhaust system. So the model traffic code, to that extent, covers it. I think, you know, there's, maybe we're talking about going beyond that in our, in our municipal code, if I'm reading the tea leaves correctly.
Yes. And to the extent of motorcycles, I mean, Harleys tend to be much louder. So how would that be addressed? Or is it?
That seems to be a point of pride with certain motorcycles.
Well, I think hearing motorcycles, just because of the, for the safety reasons, like, I understand.
Yes. And certainly, those are not the motorcycles that tend to speed away from us.
Yeah. They're, they're loud, not as fast.
So we, we have a better chance with that, that group? But, yes, they, they can be loud, and they, you know, they, they can be addressed by us. And on, on occasion, we do address them when we have, you know, the ability to identify. And of course, if you're driving with 12 Harley riders, we have to pick out the one that's making the noise, or they're all making the noise. And it's hard to tell a judge that I, you know, I picked the wrong one and made them, you know, a stop that's not legit. So it, you know, it can put questions in officers' minds. I think, you know, we've all stopped people for obvious, clear and obvious violations. That's just the low-hanging fruit there, and we'll do that consistently.
Just one last question in regards to, like, jakes on semis. What is, are there any regulations or, or like, just common courtesy that is generally followed?
That, that tends to often be a municipal. I'm not sure of a state law. But again, that's difficult to enforce if you're coming down I-70 and the sign says no jake brake here, or no, you know, alternative braking system. I think you can, in the middle of the night, identify the folks who are using that. The State Patrol would certainly do that. But I'm not sure if, as a state in Colorado, we have that as a law.
HB 251039, that just got approved, is specific to those types of things. And what it's specific to, though, is that the, the jake brakes are inspectable. So some of the things that are a challenge is that we, we can say, oh, it sounds like you may not have one on there, but it's difficult to, to inspect. So by 2027, all commercial vehicles, if they're equipped with jake brakes or certain other kinds of, like, the transmission exhaust and those types of things, will be required to be inspectable. So they have to, or, or they have to have a certification that they carry with them once every six months that says it's been checked and verified that it's in good shape. The other thing that HB 251039 does is, it increases, we talked earlier about the, about the penalties, it increases the penalties. So it makes it a little bit more important to the, the, the operators to actually have those things taken care of and done the way they're supposed to be done.
Sure. Counselor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Technology aside, I'm curious if you've got a conversation with the, the state about requiring some type of yearly annual, like, an annual inspection? I know, for instance, like, state of Louisiana, they require the non-commercial to inspect everything, from the headlights, the, you know, your turn signals, everything. I know we've all been on highways and you see somebody, something's not working, and, you know, I, I don't, I can't really see behind me to see everything's working. So I think it's a good, good idea. And then perhaps that could be something that would, you would also tie in, like, the muffler until the technology improves. But has there ever been a conversation with that, with, with the state?
We, we haven't engaged with them, but I've come from states that have a full motor vehicle inspection program. And they certainly have much more compliance, because I think every biannual inspection not only inspected the vehicle, but when you did emissions, it inspected the exhaust to make sure that the inspected, and our inspectors don't look at it for alteration, they just look at it for emissions. Usually, they plug into your onboard computer system without even looking at your exhaust. So we don't get compliance there, but if, if they're willing, people maybe in this room to put pressure on it, I would love to see that, because I think it would be one other measure of, of enforcement that we could use to reduce that.
Counselor Rolltine.
Thanks. So I, I live at the glorious trifecta of I-70, 44th Avenue, and Wadsworth. So vehicular noise is definitely something that impacts, impacts where I live. I, I'm hearing, though, that, you know, enforcement's challenging. The technology, like, when I read the technology options on paper, they actually sounded kind of interesting, but then it wasn't really clear to me, like, if we were to pursue technology, how we'd establish, like, where to install it? You know, how do we, how do we program that? You know, do we do it citywide? Do we just put it in one place? And so my, my approach on this is, I mean, it sounds like there's some teeth that exist with the adoption of the, the common code. And would we be able to do more if we adopted our own? I mean, is there, is there more we could do? Golden's approach was kind of interesting to me. I would love to know what you guys did in Maryland. I mean, that sounds like it's a statewide thing, but to be able to be like, go fix this. But I'm just, what, what I'm, what I think I'm hearing is that there's not much more we can do other than maybe looking at some technology. We could adopt additional code in enforcement, but I'm, you know, I just am always a little bit wary about adopting things that are hard for us to enforce. So if it could give us more teeth, I would fully support adopting a local ordinance, if it would either give us more fines or more repercussion. But I'm, I'm just trying to suss out, like, is there more we could do with it? Or would we be pretty much in the same situation we are with the common code that?
Well, I'll leave it to Mr. Dahl to speak on enforcement. Penalties, but I, I think the state generally sets the low bar, and it's up to the municipal governments to decide if they want to do more over and above what's there. So, for example, in our street racing ordinance, we, we added a civil, you know, protective order where we can seize a vehicle and protect you from your car, I guess. But there are things that we've added that have, you know, certainly had an impact in certain circumstances. To your question about technology, if we were to pursue technology, I would say that we would use probably, I think Eric and I are in agreement, we would probably use a handheld device that was mobile around the city, and also one that we could clearly identify when traffic was light, which car we were looking at, to use that type of technology. I hasten to say that, just, hasten to say that, just because I do think we're on the cusp of a real innovative period around this, when they couple AI with these detection systems and maybe use that. So I don't want to get too far ahead, but some of the companies Eric's talked to and I've talked to, say, you know, one to three years, we'll, we'll have something that has really got some teeth to it. So I, depends on how, how fast we want to move on it, really. And I don't know, Mr. Dahl, if you want to speak to the punitive part of that?
Well, of course, we have municipal court. That's what we have. There also is, of course, the administrative enforcement that we mentioned earlier. For things that aren't of statewide concern, for example, a fix-it requirement, I don't think that there would be preemption around that, because the state really doesn't occupy that, that field in that way. And I think we'd probably structure something that, that you could do locally. Is that responsive to?
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the tools you have, you know, municipal court, administrative enforcement. But that's just, what are you enforcing? Right? And so then you have to get to what the base requirement is, or the, the law that's been violated. And certainly requiring a muffler, and there isn't one, then that gets into, we'd be able to enforce that. I think we could enforce a fix-it ordinance, because I just don't think there's preemption. I think we could enter that field.
Thank you. I, I like that direction of, like, the requiring to, to fix it. Am I hearing correctly that that's something that we could consider for adoption?
Yeah.
In our own ordinance? Yeah. Because what I'm imagining is that there's probably a handful of cars, this is all in my imagination. My bike is really quiet. But there's a handful of cars that get pulled over every year that actually have this problem, and you've pulled them over, either this is primary or it's a secondary condition. And what I'd really like is for us to have teeth to make sure that that car that you're already engaged with, that, like, you heard when you pulled over. I mean, there, there are, there are, even I can tell, obvious cars that have the issue. And even if we can have teeth to address a couple of those that are known and not in this, like, hard-to-enforce area, if we could have more teeth around requiring them to repair, I think that could take a couple of noisy cars off the road. So I think that's maybe an approach that could give us a little bit more, more teeth. I don't know how that sounds to you.
Your, the direction you're going is to offer the option of repair instead of getting, having the conviction that you violated the law? Right? Is it like an administrative thing, or?
I, I think I can help with that. The program that was in Maryland was a state-run program where it was a, really a, a list of violations. So you could write somebody a violation of the altered muffler, or you could write them an equipment repair order. And really, the, the penalty for, for an equipment repair order was greater than the fine would be for the citation, because to have a shop put your old muffler system on there, if you still had it, was more expensive than it was to pay the, you know, $100 fine for having an altered muffler. So it only took one time to have, to tell somebody, you need to put the right muffler on, or you're, you're going to have your registration suspended. We can't suspend registration, so we don't have quite the same carrot and stick, but there could be a formula for a schedule of fines that makes it, you know, such that if you don't fix your muffler or exhaust system, then you, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna pay a hefty price for that through the municipal code. So it, it, it doesn't only have to be for exhaust either, but generally here, that's what we're speaking about. But those are the type of, it's, so it's not really an either or. You could actually write both of them, if you really wanted to be a jerk about it and say, you need the equipment repair order and you're getting a citation. For people who did that multiple times, you might do that and say, I've given you three chances, you, you keep flipping the muffler back and forth, now you're getting both. But it just gives us a different avenue to pursue.
And, and I, I agree with that approach, particularly when we consider that there are probably a fair percentage of vehicles on the road here in Wheat Ridge that would be in violation of, if we set, you know, 80 decimals or something like that, because it's an older car and the muffler is deteriorated. And that, my original thought was that in, in those sorts of situations, the, the person that's been cited mentions to the, the judge that it is an older car and, and they can't afford to repair it, and the judge gives them a certain amount of time to get the repair done, and then come back and say, you know, here's the receipt, I've had the muff, this deteriorating muffler, I've had it repaired, and the case would be dismissed. The, the concern, though, is the deliberate alteration of that vehicle to emit more noise than it's, than it's supposed to. And that's where I think that we, we can't be, we can't go back and forth. If you have deliberately taken the muffler off your car and replaced it with something else, or you've, you've got a straight park on, on a motorcycle, it's a choice you've made. And, and that choice allows you to, to impose your, your sort of sound will on the community. And it's just not acceptable for a community to say, yeah, you can go and zip up and down Wadsworth or Kipling or down 44th and, and blast away at, at, decimal levels that far exceed a, a normal loud noise of 80-some decimals. So it, it isn't a question of, of people doing something that they weren't aware of or whatever, this is intentional behavior. And, and I think we, if we address it with something that is specific to Wheat Ridge that says, okay, here in Wheat, if you want to go, you know, out in the country somewhere where there are no houses and blast away, fine. But here in Wheat Ridge, we, we will not tolerate that, because that's, again, deliberately altering that vehicle to emit noise is a choice you made. I, the question I have real, real quick here is, would this not fall under what we approved last year under the Automated Vehicle Information System, part of our enforcement decisions, that would seem like, since we're talking about an automated system, that, and I, ideally, I see it as something that is not focused on, on Kipling Avenue at 5:00 in the afternoon, where you've got a million cars. This would be on one or two-lane roads in the city, typically 38th or maybe 44th, where you've got a single vehicle going by, and it's bingo, you got them, because he's, he's blasting away in 90 decimals. Does Avis cover something like this?
We really wrote Avis, I think, with speed and red light cameras in mind. So it covers it in one respect, but I think we would have to do an amendment or an addition to it to, to just add this in. I, I think we did that with the red light cameras already, so we modified the ordinance once, and it wouldn't, it probably wouldn't be much of a lift to, to add this in to what Avis is, although it's not under, by state definition, this doesn't meet Avis. This is a different program altogether. So I think we'd have to look at whether or not it needed a new umbrella, but more than likely, I think, because the program itself is identified, we might be able to get it in there.
And it seems like the intent was using automated technology to identify violations.
Yes. It's just we call out the, the, we call out the legislative, you know, requirements in our Avis program, so it's, it's really tailored more to that. But yes, it is, for all intents and purposes, it's very similar to Avis.
The, the point about inspections, and, and I agree. In fact, it is something that I'm going to suggest to the Legislative Affairs Committee that Colorado think about, some sort of vehicle inspection maintenance program. I mean, it's, it works elsewhere. We should have something that prevents cars that shouldn't be on the road from continuing to drive and get a renewed license every year. If you, if your car does not have an ODB plug, and it's time for your vehicle emissions inspection, the inspectors are told not to inspect that vehicle, because it, it doesn't have a muffler, it has a, an altered muffler, which could change, I guess, change the, the quality of the exhausts coming out in terms of emissions. So the, the importance of vehicle inspection and maintenance, I think, can't be overstated. A separate issue for another time. And then, oh, on the, the point about implementing in the multifaceted enforcement and education strategy, I think is totally right on, right on the money. And I think part of that would, would include signage that says, we enforce noise regulations, noise ordinances in Wheat Ridge. That includes trucks that, that have, are using jake brakes on I-70 without mufflers. You know, as somebody that lives near I-70, it is just, it is just one of those where, you know, at least, especially between 9:00 in the morning, about 10:00 in the morning, and if there's a, traffic backed up at Wadsworth right by my house, it's the most obnoxious noise. I don't live near roosters, so I can't, I can't comment on that.
I understand that we're currently struggling with our partners at CDOT about enforcement issues up on the highway, but we'll, we'll see what kind of response we get from them as we move forward on speed enforcement and other types of enforcement up there, and what our role is supposed to be on the highway. So keep that in mind as we move forward.
How much does one of these, the technology, cost, a handheld?
How much does one of these, the technology cost, the handheld?
It's not, it's about what, it's about what an Avis camera costs. And then depending on location, part of your conversation, we may need more than one in order to triangulate to what needs to be done to figure out exactly what car was making that, was creating that violation.
I know when we put the speed cameras in, we essentially assume that those would pay for themselves because they're, do we think the same thing would happen with this?
It's, it's, it's. There's no good business model. I think if we look at Golden, who bought into it and only had five legitimate citations and two of them that got paid, the answer is probably not. Ultimate has been good in that we'll never pay anything back to them. We may get, you know, some revenue from Ultimate. But in this instance, if they see that as a losing proposition, we're going to pay for it.
Right. And we won't be able to use these on the highway right now?
Not right now.
Not right now, okay. Counsel Hulte, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So I think I'm hearing some things coming together here and I just want to see if I'm capturing this. So I'm hearing for Wheat Ridge to adopt its own ordinance that is explicitly prohibiting modified exhausts that produce excessive noise and requiring a muffler. Is that correct? That we want to explicitly say, you can't have a modified?
Well, the understanding would be that if you're, if you're exceeding this decibel limit, that would be part of this.
Wait, that's not what I asked.
Yes, it is. Because if you're exceeding that, you are operating vehicle that doesn't have a muffler.
Probably end up doing, I've been making promises, require a compliant muffler. Then you define what a compliant muffler is, the actual equipment. Because then it'll produce, you know, sound at the, below the appropriate level. I think it might not be helpful. And we can see what other people have done around requiring compliant equipment. But then the, the amount of sound it produces isn't the only measure of whether it's a compliant muffler, right? Because you'll have standards that are more, that are going to be easier to imply from enforcement standpoint, just on that one. I made notes about the other, like three or four elements that I'm hearing, as I think you are too.
Yeah.
That's what I think about that.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hearing, so what I'm hearing is that the noise piece is just really hard to enforce, just pretty consistently.
Yeah, I just want to distinguish between a potential technological solution, which would enforce probably on decimals. And then the, what we're talking about here, which is a, an ordinance that we can enforce now that would be based on an alteration, that's an obvious alteration you can, you can identify personally.
Right, so I guess I'm focusing on that latter scenario to give us more teeth to, when we identify that, that we are citing it and requiring court appearance. I like that Golden did that, that then would allow that system to require significant fines or repairs. I'm hesitant just based on what I'm hearing tonight, like the cost and like how many vehicles actually get intercepted through current technology using, like going for noise, that it's just, it's not actually having a huge impact. And I would hesitate to make that investment, especially if you, you know, if there's indicators that there's better technology coming. I would be very open to technological solution. But right now, like the return on that, from what, what I'm hearing from the research that's been done is that it's not actually really converting into, like actually getting cars repaired and off the road that are making those, those noises. So I, I would support an ordinance that's requiring a muffler, not allowing modified mufflers if a car is caught with that. It's a mandated court appearance. And that we're requiring repair or like an escalated cost. I'm, I'm not supportive of a technological solution at this point, just given the cost and the lack of efficacy on it, so.
Thank you, Counsel Rome.
The one question I did have is on the, on those noise things. Do they do double duty for like triangulating, you know, sounds from guns or fireworks?
You know, that was a question I asked of the, I never know how to pronounce the name, but out of, out of Norway, the Krul, they're the folks that are furthest along. And they said at this moment, they would not recommend that.
Counsel Dozeman.
So I just, I just had a follow-up question in regards to the enforcement of the altered muffler. So that is already legislated, correct? And so if we were to adopt a municipal policy, it would, it could just be more stringent as far as like an appearance in our municipal court? Or like, what's the point of adding an extra layer?
Well, you can.
From our end.
I guess you can give more options to the judge in that a repair could be required that the state doesn't necessarily require. You could pay your fine and move on. So there's other options, I think, for the judge. And then it could be an elevated fine schedule as well. That if they don't repair it, there could be a more punitive fine for that.
So is that something that we could potentially bring back in regards to like the, the penalties? And, because it, it sounds like there's not really a, a solid solution in regards to the noise right at this time. But the altered muffler, I, I guess, could be addressed separately and potentially looked at as far as the tiered penalties and whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, the noise is certainly commingled with the alteration, so.
Right. But that's already in law, like that's already enacted in law.
Right.
Okay.
We're going to do one more pass through a couple of people and then I think we're going to be ready for a consensus. Counsel Larson.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. And what I've found out is that there is a town in Ohio, and I'm sorry, in Iowa, that purchased the system and it cost them something like forty thousand dollars to purchase and then a ten thousand dollars for installation. I certainly would not recommend that. I would recommend that we operate under some sort of an agreement with a vendor that allows us a lease. And then if the program is, is not performing the way it's supposed to, that we simply discontinue the lease. We don't own the materials, we don't own the, the assets. The, the, the idea that, that a vehicle that has, has deliberately, the owner of the vehicle has deliberately altered that vehicle to emit more noise than its, its manufacturer intended is something that, that, again, I think if we, if we have something in Wheat Ridge that addresses that directly, it allows us to take, it allows the municipal court to respond as appropriate. And the, the other, I'm, I'm sorry, the other point about... So much to this, so many different sides of this issue. Come back to me, please.
Do we have anybody else? Seeing nobody else, I'm going to go back to Counsel Hulte for a consensus.
Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt our own ordinance prohibiting modified mufflers and requiring mufflers. If, and it's a primary offense. If a driver is cited for this, that it requires a court appearance.
Of course, sorry.
But a court appearance. Mandatory court appearance. And that one of the options the judge can exercise is requiring repair. And that we look at an escalating fine system so that it gets very expensive very quickly to not repair it. And so that is my consensus I'm moving.
Okay, do we have consensus on that? I see consensus on that. Counsel Larson, do you want to add something?
And just, I'm, I'm sorry, again, there's a lot, a lot of stuff around this. But I would also like to point out that if somebody is cited for a violation of Colorado's Motor Vehicle Code and, and appears in municipal court, half of the revenue from that fine is split with the state of Colorado. You have, the city of Wheat Ridge has its own ordinance on a specific issue and that person is found guilty, the entire fine comes back to the city.
Well, what I'm hearing is it's going to be a municipal ordinance, so the citation will be a municipal violation. Right? Okay.
The, the point is that if, if it's cited under the Colorado statute, that violation is split then with the state of Colorado.
But it wouldn't be because what's been proposed is a municipal.
If, if you're cited now for not having a muffler and under this data, you're gonna, where are you going to appear? Are you going to appear in Jefferson County? You're going to appear in Wheat Ridge?
It would be in Jefferson County for the state violation, so.
State violations are, are in the county court.
Okay, all right, let me clarify that.
Yeah.
So we have a good consensus moving forward. So that closes out issue number three. We'll go to Mr. Dahl for staff reports, or I'm sorry, Mr. Goff, sorry.
We still want to do, does everybody have? There, there was a little bit of interest to hear from the chief about the events in Evergreen and kind of how locally that impacts Wheat Ridge and what we do in those situations. Does everybody have five minutes for that still?
Five minutes? Okay, let's try and keep it to five, maybe seven. Certainly this has been a tough, last week was a tough week for a lot of reasons. But the school shooting up in Evergreen was most hit closest to home for us. I'm not sure that everybody's, we talked from time to time about our work around those type of active shooter events or those type of incidents. And I'll say that we, we deal with incidents like that, we prepare for incidents like that all the time. Starts with our prevention efforts, moves to mitigation efforts and then planning and preparedness. Those are the kind of the three legs of what we do. I want to tell you that we, we certainly collaborate with our schools, businesses, community organizations to identify and assess vulnerable areas and potential threats. Our intel unit works to identify those threats. We, we participate in multiple, multidisciplinary threat assessment, not just in a bubble in Wheat Ridge, but through the Jake and through all the other apparatus that provide information to us. And we assess that information. We engage with our, our schools, our school leadership, and we train people not just in identifying threats, but in also if we had got to the mitigation point, which would be us moving into an active role in, in an active shooter event, what they can expect from the police department so that they know how to act. Certainly that includes the sort of what we used to call the run, hide, fight training. Now we call it avoid, delay and defend. I think that was a change in language, just because it was legally more sufficient than fighting somebody. We just defend against the, the incident. But we do train people in that all the time. We train people in stop the bleed. We have our SROs in the school, they're our first line of defense. And they're all trained to identify people who are struggling, people who are providing indices that, that they, they could be a potential threat. And then we sort of work through that. So our SROs do a good job of identifying those folks, then investigating it, seeing their access to firearms, access to weapons, what sort of situation they have going on at home. So we, we spend a lot of time dealing with this upfront to try and get ahead of it, to partner with Fire EMS. What will we do if this happens? Doing the tabletop exercises and sharing all that intel with our partners. Were there to be an incident and we move to the mitigation phase, our officers are, I want to say they're very highly trained. We have the DeAngelo Center that was mentioned earlier. We take full advantage of that and we work not just on school shootings, but on workplace shootings, on shootings that, that occur in mass transit centers, anywhere where people will gather. So we, we have single officer response. So our single SRO at a school, should they be involved in an incident like this, would be expected to advance and eliminate the threat. In doing so, we, we teach that we stop the killing, then we stop the bleeding. So we would bypass, you know, injured people because if we don't stop the killing, we can't get to them. But we do have a robust system where we train our officers in our, in our tactical application of medical aid, including tourniquets to the people that are involved. We've deployed, the city's really stepped up for the equipment that we require for this, which includes ballistic shields, breaching tools. When we saw the Uvalde school shooting down in Texas, if you remember that, they just weren't able to get in the building. When we recognized that as sort of an after action, we bought breaching kits for every one of our patrol cars because we expect our patrol officers not to wait for SWAT, but to enter. And we know that there's a risk. But we provide them with ballistic helmets, ballistic shields. We provide them with flashbangs in our patrol units, which is very unique to our folks because we expect them to go in, we expect them to have an advantage when they go in. They have patrol rifles and they have all the tools that they need to go and take that single or that team approach to, to mitigating any of these, any of these issues. We go out in the community, we train anybody who's interested, any business that contacts us. Our crime prevention officers go out and look at the threat, threat assessment, and they train those folks in how to deal with it, how to mitigate it, and also how to respond to it, should it become an issue. Our emergency operations planning is constantly looking at the threat environment and we adjust that to make sure that we're dealing with it and we're integrating anybody new to the scene that might have a new role in the, in the ever-changing environment. We run our drills, whether that's Fire EMS or school. We run our officers through all the schools, requiring them to be familiar with not just the schools, but our larger businesses, whether it's the bottling company or other places, or even the small businesses if they want to talk to us about, you know, how they might be involved. And then where we do come to potential workplace violence, where threats are identified, we will provide officers if, if the threat rises to that level. Or we'll advise people on how to deal with it and how to contact us if they feel like it's getting out of their control to deal with that. So after every major incident, we debrief. We certainly are debriefing about the Evergreen shooting, about political violence that we're seeing around town. I know that there was questions about security here. We're looking, we've been looking at that, we're always looking at that in the building. You know, we don't believe that we're a small town that it can't happen. We believe we're a town that, just like anybody else, has a high school, we have political figures, we have folks that are struggling with mental crisis that, you know, are easily swayed one way or another. And so we take that very seriously. It's very easy for me to talk about because we train so much and we deal so often with the what-if scenarios in Wheat Ridge. When we look at the Carnation Festival, some, some agencies look and say, boy, you overdo that. I don't think we do. I think what we do is we provide a very non-invasive but robust tactical plan to deal with any issues that come up. And that's because we, you know, we, we think that it is plausible here as it is anywhere else. So that's a very fast and dirty overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it. I will say that, you know, we train all the time, whether it's just roll call training, whether it's individual training. We'll be out at Applewood Baptist training out there. We'll go to DeAngelo Center and train there. We'll train in this building and we'll train at the schools when they're empty. So we're at all those different places. Now we use the largest building probably in the metro area, the hospital, sometimes to go over there and walk around and see how we would clear a building like that. So we take advantage of our environment and organic resources we have to deal with it. And I think our SWAT team, you know, is, is fully integrated into what we do, but they're going to be there late to the game. So we've got to be prepared to deal with it right from the get-go. We know that most active shooter events end within two minutes. So if we get there in a minute, we've, we've had their time to do damage and that's our goal.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions? Counsel Snell?
Very quickly, would it be possible for us to have, maybe after the election, for us to have just like a step-by-step, here's what, here's what we should do if something happens in chambers? Like an escape plan? I don't know what that would look like, but is that possible to have that discussion or something?
Yes, I know it's been a year or two since we last had that.
Yeah, it might have been. Was it that long, right before you started? Geez, yeah, time flies, so it's time, yeah, so, yeah, we can do that again.
We, we are constantly trying to remind ourselves that not everybody, we have to go sweep again because we don't get everybody all the time and new players come into it. But we do have a, we do have a plan for evacuation here, how we lock it down, those sort of things. sort of things, and where we would move people to, and we're still building on that. But yes, we're happy to do that again.
That's great, we'll set that up as maybe part of council orientation after the election. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Dozeman?
Thank you. I just want to thank our police department for all of the efforts. I know we've really beefed up logistics around the parade and Carnation Festival in the last several years, just because of incidents that have happened elsewhere. And I just, it has been such an honor working with our police department in that regard. And I will say this over and over and over again, we have a police department that is second to none. I think we are right at the cusp of all of the innovations and advancements, and we have really created a model to replicate all, not only in Colorado, but across the nation. And I just really appreciate, not only that update, but the training and the education around just being a top-notch police department. So I just want to state that and really appreciate it. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Counsel Rome?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I wanted to say thank you, Chief, for DC Ray's response to the ICE question by one of my constituents, very thoughtful, very, you know, you know, kind of thought-provoking too, about how that situation would be handled. I know there's a lot of fear out there right now about that issue, and just really big thank you to him for that.
Yep, I'll pass it on to Chief Ray, and thank you for that. We're right in the middle of a difficult situation, but we're not federal enforcement agents. So we know what our role is, and we certainly can't interfere with federal activities, but we're not going to participate unless there's, you know, a direct threat.
Counsel Larson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And as I thought about this, and one of the comments I was going to make under the elected opportunity to speak, regarded the Weaver's Business Association event last Tuesday in the noon hour, where I had an opportunity to discuss the hotel licensing program and the success that we've had with that. And at my table was our CSO Officer Mallory. And I asked him, well, after we finish up here, where are you going? He says, well, we're doing an active shooter drill at Everett today, the day before. And so as I put that all in perspective, I thought the timing certainly was perfect, but it also reminded me that it isn't something you just put on a shelf. These are things that you do all the time. You know, there's a regular schedule.
That's one area we know that there's always going to be freshmen coming in, so we do catch that group every year and say, we've got to train, you know, the younger folks coming into the school, even though they practice in middle school, it's a new building, and they have to be trained in how that building operates. So we do, we do get to that every year, we'll try and get to the council.
Very pleased with that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you again, Chief and Division Chief, great presentation, thank you. Mr. Goff, any other?
That's it.
Okay, elected officials? I think we've beaten that horse for the evening, yes. So with, sorry, the horse is perfectly happy, the rooster may not be. Okay, so having no more comments before this study session, I will, we will see everybody back on Monday, the 22nd, for a regular meeting. The mayor should be back then, so we are adjourned.